Being just after seven o'clock, I would like to open the school committee of Foxborough's regular meeting of February 25, 2013. The agenda tonight is as follows: visitors, approval of minutes, teaching and learning highlights, 7th grade Exchange City, acceptance of donations, revision of the 2013-2014 school calendar, mid-year update of strategic plan and superintendent's entry, three key strategies, superintendent evaluation mid-cycle review, second reading of policies, statement of interest for Borough Elementary School, other matters. Then by roll call vote, we will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiating strategies with union personnel, Foxborough Education Association, and professionals. The committee will not return to open session after that. Do we have any visitors this evening? Having none, we will move on to minutes. Do we have any addition or correction of the minutes?
Motion approved, January 28 regular meeting minutes.
All in favor? Teaching and learning highlights, 7th grade Exchange City, Mrs. Allison Mello and the Ahern School students.
Yes. I'll just give you a quick brief, as the school committee knows, we've been running this the last several years, Exchange City, which is an entire curriculum, and I'm going to turn immediately over to Ms. Mello because she, yes I am, because she is the one that first knew about this program and piqued our interest here in Foxborough and has pursued it ever since. So if you remember, the first couple of years, we had sponsorship by Inventus to get started on Exchange City, and we loved it so much that we now fund it ourselves, which is exactly the whole point of a business partnership, is to help us try something that might be great for our students. So all credit to Inventus for helping us the first couple of years. We have some fabulous students here from 7th grade that are going to come and join Ms. Mello, so if you give us a little bit of an overview, maybe the kids could stop bringing their chairs up a little bit, or whatever you'd like to do.
Great. Well, we have five students with us this evening to participate in the program, they're seventh graders, they're going to come up and share their perspectives on the process from the beginning in the classroom, all the way through the job fair where they go on their interviews, and then through the field trip and their experiences that they have on the day. And hopefully, our technology is going to cooperate and our PowerPoint will be ready very soon, if I talk slowly, maybe that will happen.
That's okay.
Okay, so I will invite you up, all of you, come up together. You can introduce yourselves, sorry.
As they do, this is one of my favorite things, to go and watch the students participate in, I have gone every year, it is quite exciting. And for the students who are here, and I notice you have parents who have supported you, which is wonderful, we start every school committee meeting the last almost two years with a teaching and learning highlight, something fabulous that students are experiencing, or that our teachers are trying out as an innovation, or something exciting that students or teachers are doing, or that they're doing together. And that was an idea the committee had when Mr. Gardner was chair, and I actually think this is one of the best things we do, because this tends to be, for you students, a like a business kind of meeting, but it really is a business meeting to make sure that we're running a school system that's great for you kids. So how great is it that we started our meeting with something great that you're experiencing? So I know we have, why don't you start off with Nathan, and let's go right from Nathan back and tell us who you are.
I'm Nathan Dumas, and at Exchange City, I was the president of the bank.
I'm Emily Lubensik, and at Exchange City, I was city attorney.
My name's Dominic Amico, and at Exchange City, I was elected mayor.
I'm Olivia Valabanas, and at Exchange City, I was managing editor at the newspaper.
I'm Shannon Smalley, and I was the president of the Wellness Center.
And so what they're going to do, I know that we've talked to this committee before about Exchange City, and so some people at home may already be familiar with it, and people on the committee may be familiar with it, but we've never talked about it from the kids' perspective. So just as a quick overview, the curriculum really involves the kids becoming familiar with citizenship, financial literacy, and government. And through their experiences, students create budgets and business plans, they bounce a checkbook and write checks, they use economic theories to run their businesses, including producing, marketing, and selling goods, they write resumes and apply for and actually interview for jobs, they effectively manage their time, their tasks, and most importantly, each other, because they have to work together in their business teams, they run a government by themselves, they as citizens pay taxes, hold elections, and write their own laws by which they must abide, and they also come up with the consequences when those laws are not respected. And through the experience, they explore careers and experience real-life simulations. So we're going to start at the beginning. So after the students have had the instruction on sort of the social studies curriculum pieces of it, we get into getting ready for the actual jobs.
I'm not sure I'm going to be able to do the doc in here, so I'm just going to give you your stuff so that you can just hold it up.
Employment minutes.
Overall, my experience in Exchange City was worthwhile because I got a glimpse into how the real world works. I learned that the processes that I need to go through in order to actually get a job. One of the first steps in making, is making your resume and your cover letters. When making the resume, we need to fill out important information like our full name, birthday, and contact numbers. I thought making the resume would be kind of hard, because it was something only adults had to do right now, but when I was making the resume, it wasn't that hard. One thing that surprised me a little was that they wanted to know our hobbies. In addition, they asked for recent jobs. I remember my teacher telling us that in the real world, we'd have to make 20 copies or more of our resume and give them out to businesses, where you might not even get one of those jobs. That sounded crazy to me, because you put all the work into making those resumes just to get nothing. After making the resumes, you need to have three cover letters, and I have my resumes and cover letters right here. One of my cover letters would look like that, and then my resume was this.
Wow, that's fun.
So after making the resumes, we needed three cover letters. In the cover letters, we needed all contact information, the date, and all the interviewer's information. Then we got into why we should get the job. I need to state why I should be chosen over everyone else for the job, that kind of made it sound like it was a competition. In the paragraphs, I described the qualities about myself that would be useful in the job, then backed it up with another job I've done or am currently doing that also need those qualities. In the last paragraph, I needed to wrap up what I've been talking about for the first two paragraphs. The last paragraph only was about a few sentences long. I repeated crucial qualities from the job from the paragraphs above, because repeating words, I felt, made them stick out more. Then I ended with the closing, like yours truly, and my signature. I felt the cover letters were a little harder than the resumes, because you really needed to think deeper and surprise the businesses so they'd pick you. After we got our resumes and cover letters done, we had our interviews. I was so nervous to go up to do my interview, and I had butterflies in my stomach. I kept doing, going over all the information they might ask, because I didn't want all the classes to go to waste. I felt like I learned so much, and I really wanted to impress all the interviewers and the teachers. The first thing we needed to do was greet the interviewer by looking him straight in the eye and giving a firm handshake. Then I sat down and gave the interviewer my resume and my cover letter for that job. The interviewer asked eight questions, most of which were on my resume. In answering the questions, I gave a thoughtful and honest answer, maintaining eye contact at all times and having good posture. At the end, we stood up, gave another firm handshake, and the interview ended. In Exchange City, Exchange City was a great experience for me, because I learned how to be a real business person, and I understand now how to get and maintain a job when I'm older.
That's impressive. Very good.
Very nice. Thank you for such a thorough explanation of the preparation process for the interviews. I had kind of forgotten about the cover letter, so thank you for the detailed explanation. So now we're going to move on to, once the students have their jobs selected and they are in their businesses, what they will be doing. So Shannon, I'll even move the microphone so that you don't have to go far, how's that? There you go.
I was the president of the Wellness Center, and the Wellness Center was new this year. And for the classroom, you had to fill out a lot of paperwork where the expenses and the loans, you had to fill out the employee information sheet first, and you had, you bought the total net pay and total gross pay for the day, and you used them on the business expense form, which had all your expenses on it, and you added them up to get your total loan. And after you filled that out, you got your loan application, and you got the loan application, you had to fill that out, and when you got to Exchange City, you had to give it to the president of the bank, who puts the money in your account, and your goal is to pay back that money for the day, after the day. And then you have to...
How did your business work on paying back the loan?
Since it was new, we had to make up ways to pay back our loan. We had health insurance, and we only sold that in the morning for $2. And then we had the jar of life, which everybody in the afternoon would pick one scenario on a slip, and if you didn't pay your health insurance, for health insurance, then you had to pay the fine on the slip.
What was the slip, what was an example of what could be on the slip?
You had to get a flu shot, so you had to pay a dollar, but most of them cost more than a dollar, because then you wouldn't make any money.
It's a harsh reality.
You had things for sale on the shop, like you could sit in a chair and get a massage. We sold stress balls and keep, calm, and carry-on magnets, and jump ropes, and we sold all of these to help us pay off our loan.
Awesome. Very nice.
Now we're going to move on to hear about, because it's a city, we have a mayor, and there was an election process, and lots of people ran for mayor this year, but here we have the winner.
Well, my name's Dominic Amico, and as Mrs. Mello just stated, I was elected mayor of Exchange City for House B. Now, there were probably, I want to say, three different periods of the mayor term, so to speak. The first part, I thought, was perhaps the most exciting part, and what that was is basically the election process. Now, I wasn't the only one who was excited, but I felt that every other student was excited for this part. What the candidates had to do is they had to write up a speech, they had to present that speech to their house, so I'm from House B, so I had to present it to House B. So another thing that mayors had to do, or people who wanted to run for mayor, you had to make a campaign poster, and on that campaign poster, you can design it any way you'd like, but you have to have your slogan. So on a slogan, it could be, I don't know, mine was, "You deserve the best, most honest, fair mayor, so why not vote for Dominic Amico?" So I put that on my poster. Unfortunately, all my posters didn't really make it through that process. So, I'm sorry, I can't share one with you. But one of the most important parts of the election process, at least I felt it was the most important, was you had to hire a campaign manager. So what I learned from this is that you should always pick a campaign manager who's friendly, knows a lot of people, and is excited about what they do, because believe me, it helped.
He's a future politician.
Later that day, after we gave our speeches, what we do is we vote. We vote for who you think should be mayor and who you think should be judge. So it wasn't just for mayor, there was a judge part too. So later that... So later that day, it was announced over the Ahearn TV station, the Daily Tune, where almost everything else is announced. And that was where House A, Judge, and Mayor was announced, and House B, Judge, and Mayor was announced. And then the second portion of the mayor term was obviously the day in Exchange City. That day, you had, I realized that you had to have a strategy because if you're the head of 100 kids, it's going to be pretty stressful. So my strategy was this. I basically ran Exchange City as if it were a company. I thought of each business as if it was a different sector of the company and that the company couldn't survive if one of the businesses didn't work as hard. So I felt that that really helped the city thrive. I made sure that I checked in on every single business owner in every business to make sure that our company was working as best as it possibly could. I had to give two speeches throughout the day. I got to work, collaborate with the judge in order to pass laws and set those fine amounts. So I made sure that those fine amounts were set so that people wouldn't go off and commit too many crimes. But unfortunately, we still got roughly $100 in fines, if not more. City Hall, one other thing I noticed throughout City Hall is that we represent the citizens' best interests and that we lead an example. Because, for example, if City Hall isn't working, the citizens aren't going to be working. If City Hall is working pretty successfully, I feel that the businesses are going to be working pretty successfully. I felt this experience overall really did help me in a lot of ways. The first way is I've wanted to be in government for a couple of years now. And I realized through this experience that it could possibly be the right path for me because I felt I enjoyed it a lot. And I also realized that, well, I felt that I did a good job running the city.
Thank you so much. And you did do a great job running the city.
Thank you.
All right, now we are going to hear about an important business in the city, reporting on the news and events of the day. Newspaper.
Hi, everyone. I'm Olivia Valvea. When I went to Exchange City, I was lucky enough to get the job of managing editor at the newspaper. To do this job correctly, I needed to be a lot of things. I needed to be hardworking, creative, and, as with any job, I needed to work well with other people. Hardworking was an important trait because I had to produce and distribute a newspaper. It took a lot of work, making sure everyone was working on a story and that we were covering all the important events. Staying organized took hard work because there were so many papers, checks, and orders to keep track of. If I didn't have someone's check ready right away or wasn't able to help them immediately, they got angry at me. Something else that was hard work was keeping track of what everyone was doing. I couldn't have someone on break if they weren't supposed to because then we wouldn't have enough people working. If someone didn't know what they were doing, I had to stop whatever I was doing at the time and help them. To be managing editor at the newspaper, I also needed to be creative. One of the responsibilities I had to fulfill was creating the cover of the newspaper. That took creativity because that's everyone's first impression of the newspaper. So if it's boring or not strategically put together, people won't think our newspaper will be interesting. Writing stories and articles took creativity because they needed to be intriguing. Last, I had to work well with other people in order to be managing editor at the newspaper. At the beginning of the day, we were in impoverishment. In order to get the money we needed, I had to take out a loan at the bank and get all the stuff we needed. This meant that it was crucial for me to work well with the president of the bank and the distribution center owner. Of course, I also had to collaborate well with the rest of the newspaper staff. If we didn't work well together, nothing would get done because we would have spent the whole time arguing. Exchange City was a great experience and also very educational. I think everyone should have a chance to go to Exchange City because it prepared us for the real world.
Great. You want to show them the newspaper?
Yes. Then we have the newspaper. We have a bunch of pictures and stuff. And then an interview with the House A, mayor, and judge. Advertisements, all the businesses sent one in and paid for them. Some arrests. And then we had letters to the editor. Tried to go through the letters that people sent in to me and pick some that I thought would be good.
Did you think your job was a little stressful?
Yeah.
So as you can see, everybody here had a leadership role at Exchange City. And I would like to thank Mr. Williams and Mrs. Cloud for selecting you because you've all represented yourselves very well here this evening. And now we're going to look at probably one of the most stressful jobs, which is the president of the bank. And so Nathan is going to talk about his role and how, actually, he was involved with every single person in the city, just like some.
Yes. So as we all know, to have a business, you obviously need money. And if you don't have money, it can't function. So at the beginning of the day, all the owners of the companies had to come to me personally and ask for a loan. So I had to approve the loan, put it in the computer, and then their task for, by the end of the day, was to pay off their loan, and then by paying off their loan, they could create profit. So a lot of responsibilities I had was that, it was a very stressful and high-maintenance job because every five seconds, I had papers on my desk keep overloading in piles. And I actually got fined for having a messy desk. And also, not only did I have to make sure all the companies paid off their loans, I had to keep watch over my employees and everyone else that worked at the bank. So I had multiple jobs in one job. So all the tellers, in and out, people were coming in to take their paychecks and deposit them in their bank accounts so they could have money to spend and buy products. And throughout the day, the accountants would come. They would take all their money, write it down, and give it to me. I'd put it in the computer and subtract the money, and I would tell them how much money left they had to pay off. And almost every single business, maybe one or two businesses, didn't pay off their loan. But almost every business paid off their loan by the end of the day, which means everyone was working hard, everyone paid off their loan, which was really nice, which made it a lot easier for everyone else to work because everyone else was working. It made it a lot easier for everyone else.
We're going to just wrap up with a, excuse me, one second, with a video from the, uh-oh, there it is, from that day. Nathan doesn't know that this is coming because it's a video of him. And it's very brief. And this is at the end of the workday, and hopefully we'll have enough sound and it will all be good.
So it is the end of the day here. Hello, Nate. The bank president, you've been working hard all day, I know. You haven't left, and I don't really want to take up any of your time because I know. City finance manager, has she been in here yet? Jackie?
It was Tony.
Tony, we got two of them, right. Well, I think Jackie's going to come in with our final deposit. We just barely paid off our loan.
I'm pretty close to paying. I need $3. Is that $31.50? Yeah. We need $3.
I need $2.
Are you serious?
We need $1.
Oh, my God.
Oh, no, we need $1.
There's that desk, Nathan, that you were talking about. So these fine youngsters are available for any questions you may have of them about their experience. Yes.
You know, I can't, you look back at what you did in junior high school, and I can't even imagine back then us thinking about doing something like this. I am so impressed with you young people. I can almost see you in a position when you grow up. Young lady, I can picture you running your own business, going out on speaking tours, running seminars, telling people how to present themselves and what not to do in order to get employed. And I have to tell you, I am so impressed with you and the teachers that oversee this program. You can see that you thoroughly enjoyed it, but I think you got so much more out of it. And I think what we all need to know is that we need students to be able to apply what they learn and put it out into the real world and what they're going to face someday. I can picture each and every one of you in this position somewhere along the line. And I think it gives you something to strive for. You might not wind up doing something like this, but it's an eye-opener, I think, for all of you on how to present yourself, and I am so impressed. Great job.
Yes.
I had the very good fortune to participate as an interviewer and also to go to the House B Exchange City Day. And I can tell you that all of the kids in the seventh grade were incredibly professional and worked very, very hard. And it was stressful. I was in the newspaper the day that I went to Exchange City, and those kids just worked nonstop, right out straight. And I saw how hard the mayor and the city attorney worked, everybody. They worked as a team. They had to work collaboratively. And I think we're really lucky. If this is our future, we're in good shape.
I think you're wise beyond your years, and it shows. The maturity, the sense of who you are and your direction, it's, I'm blown away. I really am. Your teachers, really.
It's a fabulous program.
What a program.
The teachers, not me. The teachers did a fabulous job preparing them.
Absolutely. There's a smile on every face.
I attended Exchange City when my children were in middle school, and it was just so exciting to see the real-life experiences that all the kids had. Very, very impressed by all of you. You're all articulate and so poised and confident. And I just think that these real-life experiences that we're giving to the students and they're embracing and really taking such full advantage of is just a great opportunity. So, and I think the teachers, I know, Allison, you've been at the, you know, I remember when you first came in organizing this and your enthusiasm. And I do think it does get definitely traded on to the students, and they just embrace it, too. So just thank you so much for coming in and sharing your experience. And it's obvious that you took the time to really present these really wonderful stories about what your experience was like. So we really, I really felt like I was there. Everybody gave such a great representation. So thank you for doing that.
Great job. Bruce.
Mrs. Mello put her clutches into me early on when I joined school committee to also be a participant in Exchange City. And I want to congratulate you guys because you did a great job. I can tell. Of course, I know these guys, and I know they do a great job. But one of the things, I don't know if Mrs. Mello mentioned, but for those watching, this involves a bus ride down to Providence to a Johnson &amp; Wales campus, which is set up just like a city. There's a city hall, there's a sports center, there's a newspaper office, there's a public garden, which I don't think you can step on without being fined, if I'm not mistaken.
I think we stepped that at $2.
$2 fine, Dominic?
People still walked on the grass.
When your paycheck's $6, that's a pretty steep fine.
Mrs. Mello, my question would be, and I'm just brainstorming as I like to do, but this is such a great opportunity for 21st century skills for our kids. I know in eighth grade, we do a career day. Is that our logical continue-on or follow-on? I'm just thinking, you know, if we ever had the opportunity to send our eighth graders back to Exchange City, and maybe you guys could comment on this, but I bet if you went back next year, I bet you'd learn a lot and do things a whole lot differently. And I just wonder, is that the, is the career day the follow-on activity?
It's funny that you say that because on the bus home on both days, students said, "I wish we could go back tomorrow. I know I would do so much better because I know how to do my job." It's just like us. When we have our first day at our new job, we are learning. Eighth grade career day is the next step because it takes them into their fields that they're interested and learning how their education connects to those fields. And then when they get to high school, they have the credit for their full life. Now, that is really the next step up from this experience where they actually meet with the bank people and take out the loan and buy the car and pay the rent and all of the credit cards and trips and all the expenses. You can elaborate that in a little bit more, Mrs. Mello, but...
Yes, that is a fabulous event. We do that in partnership, the Attleboro School Career Partnership. So I think it's at Wheaton College this year. In the past, we've unfortunately been limited because it is from three or four towns that we can't send an entire class. So my dream is to be able to have enough sponsorship to be able to have, say, annually, the entire junior class or the entire sophomore's, whatever we decide, that everybody gets to participate. Because I think we send somewhere between, I think we have 70 seats, and if some of the other districts don't take them, we can send a few more. But great timing because I was at a Rotary Club dinner last Wednesday and I actually talked to the Rotary Club about pursuing, whether it's them or if they have any ties. If we could make that happen and have it on-site so that we don't have a bus of 70 kids going to Wheaton, but we have our own on-site credit fair for life because when you attend that, you'll be wowed because they have to budget for an apartment, for living expenses, for transportation, for health insurance. And, you know, they have clipboards, and it's really shocking when they say, "What do you mean, I have..." Have you done it? Either of you done it?
It's next Thursday.
It's next Thursday.
The following Thursday.
Right.
And you'll have to come back and tell us about it.
That is the next eye-opener. So this business responsibility, no matter what profession you're in, you realize what it really takes to run a business and hopefully make a profit. And then it's personal financial responsibility, which kind of go hand in hand. So let's see what we can do to make that happen for our kids because I only know one of the towns is able to have it strictly for their high school so that every single child, every single student in a particular grade gets to experience that. So that certainly is on my list in my head, my mental list.
We should work towards that.
I, too, am one of the fortunate ones who have been invited and been able to participate two different times as an interviewer, which I thoroughly enjoyed. And of course, the day when I accompanied everybody to Providence was just one of the best days of the year. It's incredible to watch these young people working and how they step up and accept responsibility and learn to work with each other.
Did the four of you who are running the businesses, did you feel stressed when you had to go apply for the loan and then realize you owed that money and had to work hard to pay it back? Was that stressful?
Yes.
Because I sensed that. I went to House A's day, but that's the sense every year I get is it really hits you when you're signing those bank papers for the loan and then the pace of keeping it up. So we just want you to know that's such a valuable experience, and that's exactly what your parents do. So we knew an appreciation for running the household.
We didn't really talk about how they get their paycheck. We have great video of them all waiting in line at the bank, and the line's all the way out the door, and it's their break time, and they waste their whole break on the waiting in line, just like we do, and it's very stressful. And then they have their checkbooks, their personal checkbooks, that they can go and use to help support the other businesses. So there is time for them to also make wise choices with their money and get experience bouncing their checkbook and all that. We didn't really talk about that. But I just would like to say that you all are so fortunate to be in Foxborough because not many other towns, one of the moms was telling me at La Crosse this weekend that she'd been bragging about Exchange City, and none of her friends or family in other towns have ever even heard of it. And we are so fortunate that we do get the support of Miss Abrams and the school district to continue to send you. So, and you get to go and have this great experience as part of your seventh grade. So in closing, I would love for you to tell us, unless there's any more questions, one thing, like your takeaway, what you learned the most, what you've taken away from it.
Well, I think the thing, what I learned the most is that, one, nothing is free, basically. So no matter where you go, you have to use money. You can't get anything for free.
One thing that I learned was managing time and managing to get all of our loans paid at the end of the day just so that go on to the next day.
That's a great point.
Probably the most significant thing I learned was that no matter what you're doing in life, you have to attack it with a strategy. You can't just go in and think you know what you're doing. You just have to have a strategy.
The thing that I probably learned is that you have to work really, really hard to get what you need done, to actually get done, and also manage your time really well.
The thing I learned was that you have to manage your employees very well so that they don't leave the shop unattended. And you have to manage your time well so you can plan to pay off your loan in time.
I mean, first of all, such wisdom coming from five of you. But you could actually be talking about me doing my job as well. Multitasking, the accountability, communicating, managing people, you know, keeping track of your time, making sure you do it well, having a strategy or a plan. It just really, what you learned applies to absolutely anything you will want to do in life. So kudos to you. You couldn't represent the whole program better than you just did. better than you just did. Such wisdom.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Kudos to you.
I really can't take any of the credit, honestly.
So, we wouldn't have heard about it either if it weren't for you, so.
Well, that is true. And I do love it.
To be honest.
Some credit.
Great. It was fabulous.
Thank you for having them come. That was wonderful.
It's always a pleasure.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, Board of Directors. That is not a requirement. I wouldn't even recommend it.
Thank you for all coming. Yeah. All right, we need to have acceptance of donations. Mrs. Mello?
Yes. Two other happy topics. We have two donations for you to consider tonight. The first is a donation from Dorrell Juvenile Group in Foxborough. I hope I'm pronouncing it right. Dan Diaz. He is donating four car seats that we use on our transportation, in the transportation system. They're wonderful. I don't know if you want to talk about them at all, but that's quite generous.
He's been, he's been actually very good to the town for the last couple of years. And these are, you know, the larger car seats, which really help us with, you know, the transporting of the smaller kids for the preschool and even the kindergarten level. A lot of it's used on the, you know, special needs side of things. And it's really important that we have the right stuff. So, it's really nice to have newer, you know, chairs every year, that basically we can keep that very safe as we move forward.
Do we have a need, how many do we have a need for?
Well, we transport about 20, I guess about 27 or eight kids at this point every day in these type of chairs, so.
And so, you know, it's all, eventually, just like any other piece of equipment, you have to replace them. So, this is a great example of a very generous local resident who's donating four. And that's a total value of $640, which is...
Debbie, can you repeat his name?
Yes, Daniel Diaz.
Daniel Diaz.
D-I-A-S.
D-I-A-S. Thank you.
I just have one question. And I know we have on different buses and stuff. And I think my main concern about child care seats is that they're, it's kind of like a universal let-go, and that nobody's struggling trying to get a child off a bus. I remember an accident a long time ago where a straight trooper couldn't get the child out of the car because it was a new seat, and he wasn't used to it. And unfortunately, I just think in this day and age, it boggles my mind that there's so many different gadgets and different ways to do things. And I just want to make sure that everyone is well-versed on how to get these kids. And now, is it a standard one? Is it one that no matter who got on this bus, they'd be able to get every child out of this?
Yeah, and actually, it's been fairly consistent on the units that we're getting, so that they're the same. But the four buses, well, three buses that we operate daily that use these, and the one backup, the same people are using them all the time. So, they are very well-versed. And we do have to move them. Sometimes we can't have, you know, kids away from each other to go close.
It just bothers me that they, it might come to one seat, it's different from the other one, and, oh my God, how do you get this undone? And I just always want to know that there's continuity, that we can, everybody can get the same child out of every seat easily. It's just a concern. I love that somebody is willing to update us.
Very generous.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Yes, no seconded. All in favor? 400.
Can Melissa and Daniel on note?
Yes, we do. The second donation actually is part of, as you know, Ms. Ellen Pillsbury's as a school-to-career coordinator. And as part of the school-to-career program, 14 students went on a field trip to Bob's Discount Stores in Meriden, Connecticut. And they were able to do a lot of things there, watch a commercial be made for Bob's, and some other things that they can learn about the business industry and about the advertising field. After a day of those activities, the Bob's Discount Store folks presented Ms. Pillsbury with a check in the amount of $1,000, that if you were to accept it, would be used for our own Foxborough High School career exploration activities. And, you know, that, that program is predominantly funded by the Attleboro School-to-Career Partnership, that we pay a fee to, well, we pay all of our costs to it. But through that network, this would allow us to have the $1,000 to use to create something unique just for Foxborough that we're interested in, that the partnership might not be. Gives us some flexibility. So, of a motion to accept that donation.
All in favor? 500. And the other one was 500.
Knowing Ellen, she's probably got 55 ideas already.
She's, I know, she's... Spend it, spend it.
We'll have to winnow it down to one or two.
Okay, revision of the 2013-2014 school calendar. Mrs. Mello?
Yes, I apologize for bringing this back to the committee a second time, but this is fairly straightforward. In the November calendar, for the last four years, we've had the secondary conferences, the Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. You can see that as now listed as the 25th and 26th, with the elementary conferences, the Thursday and Friday immediately preceding Thanksgiving. And when you saw this draft last month, they were each moved a week earlier, and they should be where you see them now. Elementary conferences on November 21, 22, and middle and high school conferences on November 25, 26. And that is the only change.
Did we just have Thanksgiving a week early?
We could, if you want to have Thanksgiving early.
On the original calendar.
And you, I don't know if he gets goodbye on your turkey, but...
You want to make a motion to accept?
I'll second it.
All in favor? 500. Thank you.
Debbie, I know there's been a comment on the patch, and Madam Chair, if I can divert just for a minute, just while we're on calendar, maybe you want to make a comment about mid-winter here, how we're doing?
I would love to. Well, as you know, sadly, the last snow day we had put us into the last day of school as Monday, Monday, June 24. We do still have technically one snow day to use, because we built five into the calendar, so we do have that Tuesday date. But we were, I'll speak myself, I was pretty sad to go into the next week for the last day of school. I don't think that's really an ideal day to be in school. Willie doesn't seem to care about him. Senior Willie Long is having a field day with it over there. Before the meeting, I said, "No matter where he is, I'm going to call him really, really early in the morning," despite the fact that he's graduated. But I think that what this poses as a dilemma, as you know, of the four days we've used, two were actually called for by the governor. The first day of the hurricane back in the fall, and the first day of this blizzard, or whatever they're calling it, the blizzard of 2013, that the governor issued a request for all public schools to close. So, actually, two of the four didn't mean the weather was there. It just meant to close in preparation for it, which I personally think we could have gotten a nice, nice half-day in on the Friday of this blizzard. But...
The way the weather worked in Foxborough.
So, there are some other districts who are in the same position as we are with that one Monday. So, being optimistic and assuming we don't, we won't have any more, but that's a big assumption, because it's only the end of February, it really is a shame, because I know it's inconvenient for parents to come back on a Monday. It's inconvenient for staff. Nobody's, it's not a really useful day. Other districts in the same position are exploring some other options. So, I'm glad you brought it up, Mr. Gardner, because I was going to bring it up under maybe other matters, and just see what, if the, if the committee would like me to explore other options or not. And our good friend here, Joey Garrity, who's raising his hand in the audience, has written me a letter with an idea that another district near us is actually going with, which is not a popular one.
I know.
Is to, is to consider using Good Friday. Now, we did that for one school last year. It was not that popular. But it is what the IGO community did, because they had, if you remember, a gas, a water main leak, water main leak on carpenter that the rest of the district was open, but we had to close at the last minute that morning. It isn't popular to use a religious holiday. There are some other options. Years and years ago, I can't remember coming in on a Saturday, but that was just a professional development day. It wasn't a day for students. We don't have any more professional development days that we could swap out to use. So, I guess for the purposes of tonight, I would love to know if you'd like me to look into options and bring them back at another meeting. Yes, that's...
Do you have...
Well, your options are few.
Yes.
It's really to use Good Friday, to use a day during April vacation, to use a Saturday. I don't see where you have really any other, we were kind of hoping that there'd be some forgiveness for the days the governor required, but the governor's office doesn't necessarily speak to the Department of Education, who holds the 180-day requirement.
Well, there were, there was some...
So, why not send a letter to the governor and ask him, you know, you called this. Talk him to the top of the head and see if we can forgive one day.
I don't believe that's been successful in the past.
Yeah, but never hurts to ask.
I think it's a good idea to bring up tonight and to maybe explore options. And then that would give maybe, you know, parents at home time to respond and contact you or contact members of the committee to either voice...
What about a survey?
We could survey.
You know, whether they would want it for us to look into any of those options or to...
That's fairly easy to do. I am a little bit worried on the clergy side, how that reaction would be if one of those, although we are in school and other religious observances, depending on what you practice, I don't know.
I think it's smart of you, though, to bring that up, because I know that we try to be a thoughtful community. And you're right, there are a lot of different perspectives on that, so. So, as of right now, the last day of school is Monday, June 24.
Yes.
And the question is, is it productive to come back for a Monday?
Yes.
But then the other question is, if there were to be some other weather situations, I dare not even speak of them, but if it required that we did need additional days, then...
It would almost be a decision that said, "If by a certain date there were no additional days, this is what we would do."
Right, that's what I was saying.
Could you ever add an hour to a day here and there and come up with it?
Could we do that with sports?
Could you, could you ever add times?
No, that's not allowed under the regulations. Well, you can't add time to a day to make a day. You have to be in session 180 separate individual days. Will you just call on Joey just once?
Yes, Joey, we do know.
I go school with my idea, because the IGO school had to go on April 6, which was the Good Friday last year, and make up their day that they missed from their, from their water main break on carpenter street. And I thought this good idea, right? When I was with my teacher one day at the grocery store, we're coming to the IGO school to go in the special education office. And the IGO school secretary said, I gave her the letter, then she transferred it down to Admins.
And I appreciate that. It was nice getting a letter from you with a thoughtful idea.
Yes. And that was, I don't think April vacation would be a good idea to make it up, because people go away.
I know.
People make plans ahead of time.
It's true.
But the only day I saw was Good Friday. We can't do Memorial Day, because that's the first weekend of summer.
Memorial Day. I didn't think of that one.
We can't do that, because that's the first weekend of summer.
True. And people have plans. So, this is...
People are away for that.
Let's put it this way, there isn't a wonderful option available, but there might be options we could put out there to see how people feel about it.
Yeah, but the next school meeting, we'll, we'll explore options, and we can revisit next meeting, huh?
Absolutely.
Maybe at the next meeting on one of the months coming up soon.
I just think there needs to be a little bit of thought from the governor, if he's going to mandate this type of thing, that...
Want to send him a letter?
Well, I thought I would, he has a new education secretary that was the superintendent of Rock. So, I'm going to start there. But I, I'm not optimistic that that is going to result in anything. So, I think we have to make other plans or not. But do it thoughtfully.
Debbie, are there any cost issues or anything else associated with coming back just for a Monday? Or is it just strictly inconvenience?
No, because it's part of the, it's part of the contractual agreement. So, it's strictly the convenience and the inconvenience.
You know, based on that, my own personal feeling is to maintain Monday, the 24th, as the last day. And it's just my opinion. I do think it's a good topic for us to maybe think about and not vote on tonight. But if it's strictly a matter of...
I think the other thing is make sure the report cards are out on Friday, because if people have plans and they have to go away, not saying, "Don't come to school on Monday." But certainly, we'll be up to the parents. It's whether or not they go along with this extra day. Certainly, the teachers and the administration will have to be there. But I think we have to be a little bit mindful of people and their time and whatever.
I agree.
It's not going to be a learning day.
It is built into our calendar. I want to make sure I'm clear about that. That when we set the calendar, as you can see, for next year, it says five days for snow. So, it is built into the calendar through Tuesday. So, this is not, this is not a situation where, say, faculty may have already made plans to go somewhere, because they have to keep aside all five days past the students' 180 days. So, that isn't the case here. That is built into their expected schedule in case we need them. So, it isn't, it isn't the fact that we've gone into next week, because technically, we went into, into the next week through the 25th if we need them. It's just too bad it's only the one day, because, you know, that doesn't make a difference. Everybody hates to go into that next Monday.
I think the reason I asked you to get into this, and I apologize for, that you're going to do this later on the agenda. I didn't know that. But I just think it's, it's confusing to parents sometimes to understand just what you were explaining, that, you know, when we build a school calendar, we have five additional days built and planned on in the event of closing.
That is a legal requirement at this stage.
It's a legal requirement. And as it currently stands, we go into Monday, June 24. The staff is expecting that, and that's the way it is. So, you're right. This is, that's what I wanted you to point out. It's strictly a matter of convenience right now, or inconvenience, having one day out of the week. But as far as I'm concerned, unfortunately, it is what it is. And I, I do take your point about the clergy and other people's perspectives. I think that's very valid, so.
The real problem, Bruce, is if we have to cancel any more days, then we're really in trouble.
Well, then we...
So, why don't we do this? Because it is something we've all been thinking about, myself included. So, I do appreciate that it was brought up. So, why don't you, between now and the next meeting, let Wendy or I know, or both know if you're interested in putting this on as a discussion item individually. And then if the majority want to have it on as a discussion item, then we can bring forward what the options are and what we might ask for input on, for, in terms of parent community.
I say we just, we just use another day, and then that way, it's not a waste.
That's right. They'll come back on Monday and...
Oh, I'm going to miss you.
Monday and Tuesday, right. You may as well come Tuesday if you're coming Monday, right?
You may as well.
We could always make senior end day a day later.
Yes. You never know. I mean, some magic could happen there. I don't know.
Well, you can't help graduation for so many days after. It's a real...
Well, yeah, let us know, let us know individually if you want to have a discussion. If the majority of the committee does, then we'll put it on as a discussion item.
You know, in this day and age, I hope parents realize that we have to be in session so many days, and we have to accommodate snow days. And, I mean, it's not a new concept.
No.
Unfortunately, it's been there from day one.
Decades old. We're required to build a calendar with 180 student days plus five for weather incremental.
You know, and the other problem is nobody wants to come back before.
Labor Day.
Labor Day. So, that doesn't give us much leeway. So, it's, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place. We pray for no snow. We're on a weekend. We ended up on Monday.
Right. Thanks. I appreciate it.
All right, mid-year update of strategic plan and superintendent's entry plan. Three key strategies. Mrs. Mello?
To try to make this as painless as possible. That doesn't mean pain, not, no pain at all. So, one of the things that we do is annually at the July retreat, we set school district goals with the committee, and in that, you set timelines. So, it is in your goals, your district goals, to have a twice-a-year update on the strategic plan. So, that's what we, we talked about it again last July, and you still wanted the twice-a-year. So, this is the mid-year update on the strategic plan. So, Amy and I are going to kind of just take you through the high points of this, so you know where we are. So, as you know, there are four broad objectives, and you can see in the handout where we are. We put sidebars in as to whether it's in progress. The first goal, the first, not goal, first objective, to continue to offer curriculum that's rigorous and dynamic and promotes high levels of achievement for all students. The three-year goals are the first for all academically oriented. So, I'm going to turn it over to Amy, who put together a huge data sheet. She's just going to take you through the main points, knowing that this strategic plan actually has another year to go. So, this is through next year as well. So, I mean, we have one more year with this plan, and then we will be looking at it starting this fall to, for the next iteration. So, knowing that we're not at the end, this is not an end-of-the-plan report. I'll turn it over to Amy.
Okay. So, the data on your spreadsheet should be very familiar from the Fall MCAS baseline and benchmarks report. So, looking at the first goal, which was to increase the percentage of students scoring proficient and advanced on all the state MCAS tests across all subjects, the goal was to increase by 2% at the end of this timeline for the strategic plan. It was based on a rolling average from 2008 to 2010. So, what you have on your spreadsheet is the rolling average, and then looking at the next, for these last three years, 2010, 11, and 12, at a rolling average for all of those assessments, to see where we are at this point in time. If you look at all 17 of the tests, 10 of them in looking at the rolling average, we have already met our goal. And the, all tests combined, if you look at those as an average, we have 68.71% of students from our rolling average from 2008 to 10. And at this point... And at this point in time, we have increased that by a little over 3.5%, with the goal being 2%. The next data point was our advanced placement. And the sources for advanced placement scores are in a couple of different locations. One is the College Board, and the other is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The source that you have here in front of you is the College Board. We feel as though that this is coming directly from the College Board, and so that information is going to be a little bit more up to date. And when you look at the 2008 to 2010 rolling average, it was 78.77%, meaning students that scored a three or higher on the AP exam. So the actual gain there was a little over half a percent. And one of the questions that we had, being, I wasn't here myself when the strategic plan was created, and looking back at all of the data points and looking at the College Board and looking at the Department of Ed, one of the numbers, for example, in the strategic plan, it states that our baseline is 79.6. That number is not on the College Board source or on the Department of Education. So where that number came from, in conversations with Debbie and myself...
Spent hours trying to figure out.
We have spent much time.
No clue?
But we think there was a transpos...
We have a clue.
Yes.
We do, so just so you know, and this is why, there's too much stuff in my office, but it looks halfway decent considering how much I keep. I actually kept the original data packet that the strategic planning committee collected, that the goals came from pieces in here. And that, and goal number two, to say that our baseline was 79.6, I cannot find it anywhere in our original data either. Although, and Amy and I spent bazillion hours looking at where that could have come from. Do you see where she's got on your large chart that she just made, 2010, 76.9? We actually think that was transposed.
Yep.
So...
79.6?
Yes.
So it should be 79.6.
Right. No, no, in the strategic plan, it should be 76.9 rather than 79.6. But that does beg the whole question, that if it was 76.9, then the goal wouldn't necessarily be 81.
Right.
So nevertheless, we can report the actual data pieces, because that's easy. But knowing that, going back to finding our original data, and if you remember Tina, how the strategic planning worked, when it came down to specifically writing the goals and the objectives, we divided into groups. So not being at this group that wrote, that took the data pieces out of there, I can't honestly say if that's indeed what happened. Because I was on Objective 3, the Objective 3 group, the technology group. So that's the best we can come up with. So you can still have a goal to see if we're making progress toward it, but we're, we think that was a transposition. And other than that, because nothing, you can see, we have data points from years back, and there's no average of anything nor a single data point that equals to what we have in that. And everything else, we can track back exactly.
It seems very logical, your assumption.
And this was not typed in our office either, so we can't go back to any original iterations. So it was a community group, so.
I also wouldn't want, personally, wouldn't want you and Amy spending too much time over trying to figure that out.
Exactly.
Because I think the value to this mid-year report is the trends, not the specifics. And I think from that perspective, this is a very beneficial document. And I'm sorry to say that, because I suspect this was a fair amount of work. But I mean, when you look at, when we can sit here and, and all this other stuff we talk about is nice, but when we can talk about our goal of great to greater, and we can look at, and I wish the public, again, could see this, but when we look at, you know, the MCAS results, our strategic plan goal was to increase by 2%, and in the majority of our categories, we have done that. I think that's a very good statement and very, you know, indicative to the committee of how we're doing. Even though, as you point out, the AP and SAT, we may not have met the target, and there may have been a typo, I think we're improving. So I think that's important data for us to look at. And I guess my, I know we're only midstream in your presentation, but I think this is still valuable to look at mid-year.
Right.
It just from, you know, we won't inspect, you know, every little number. If there's a typo, so be it. But the trend is what's important, right?
We're seeing improvement there. So when we look at that third goal with the SAT and looking at reading and the critical writing and the math, our goal at that time was to increase in reading by three points. And at this point in time, we've already increased by 5.67.
It's terrific.
Right. When you look at the critical writing piece, we're not there yet. But then looking at the math, our goal was to increase by two, and we've increased by 4.33.
And if we were there in every measurement, we set the bar too low, right? So this, I think this is great.
The other, the fourth goal there is more on our benchmark assessments that we have here in district. So the information that you have is related to English Language Arts with the DRA, which is the developmental reading assessment. So you can see that from 2008 to 2010, we had our baseline. But looking to date now, we have two years of an average versus three. And if you remember back to the fall, we implemented the DRA 2, which was a more thorough assessment and included other pieces within that assessment. So we had to come up with a new baseline at that point in time. So although you see over 7%, 7-point gains there in two of the indicators there for the DRA, the district benchmarks are writing assessments. That has the three-year rolling average, and we have, half of those were there, and the other two of the four were not yet. So again, it's the midpoint that's here. And the math assessments that we talked about back in the fall, we have all new baselines pretty much because of the Common Core State Standards with the new standards. We had to respond to those standards with our assessments. So those are baselines, so that's why you do not see an update on the math at this point.
And if you remember, the strategic plan was approved by you in May of 2011, so it's a three-year plan. So we actually have another year and a half, actually, of school year to meet these, see how we meet these benchmarks, and then reinvent ourselves from there and see, get a group together and see where we want to go for another three years. That was a lot of work. I want to give Amy full credit for this supersized data sheet.
I think the other point, too, Bruce, to your point in looking at the data and not spending a lot of time, when we looked at some of our data in the fall with that rolling average piece and going back and recalculating exactly where it is with the strategic plan, it gives that opportunity to see the reason we use that rolling average. Instead of, because year to year, you could see spikes up and down because it is different students and it is a different assessment. By having that rolling average, you really are able to look for more trends to kind of tease out where are areas that you want to focus on and where are other ones that may not be as important. So I think that that exercise was really helpful in taking each of those and really looking at it over time.
Can I ask a question? In reporting on this now, how is this going to differ at the end of the year?
That is a great question.
Only because, you know, I want to hear you talk about how much time you spend on this and whatever. Is it time well spent? And if this isn't going to change at the end of the year report, then I think this is an exercise in futility. And I'm sorry, but I've been doing this long enough that I think we have to pick our battles, okay? And I, it bothers me, when I, when I got the packet this week, Deb, and I saw all the stuff that you people have done and how much time, I can't even begin to imagine how much time has gone into some of this stuff. And is it time well spent? Or are there other things that should be being done? And I think we, as a committee, have to take a step back and take a look at that. Because I'm looking at this, and I'm like, well, how is this going to differ at the end of the year compared to what you're reporting on now?
Well, that actually is a really good question because I don't think this report on the strategic plan is going to change very much, even in terms of which action items we've accomplished or we haven't. Personally, I think my preference would be to do an annual strategic plan update. I mean, that doesn't have to be decided now because we're going to do one at the end of the year anyway because that's in this year's goal. But I think in July, when we get back together, we need to talk about that again. Because I don't think, you know, mid-year to end of the year, what all of this work will mean is it'll be easier for us to do the update at the end of the year because we've got the bulk of the collection done. But I do think when it comes to a broad strategic plan, you know, the six-month mark versus a year mark is not a big difference when it's an overarching plan. So I think there's no wrong way to do it, but I don't think that there's, there'll be that much difference. Even in the first strategy under Objective 1, we're talking about enrichment and challenge. What else? Who do you like to add? We did just craft the first draft of an interest survey for students in grades 3 through 12. What else would you like to see us offer? But by the time, the end of the year, you've got the draft in the packet for, under my goals, anyway. By the end of the year, we'll just tell you what it was kids were interested in. So I personally am thinking that annual update on the strategic plan is enough. Just so that you know, we're continuing to focus on it. We actively engage with the strategic plan at the administrative level, and, you know, then it trickles down to the teacher level. But I'm not so sure. We need to do it twice a year. It's up to you.
I can't imagine you walking away from any of this information, and you're doing it on a day-to-day basis, but to have to put something, I mean, when I think about how you dug that piece of paper up and what you had to go through, come on.
I know.
It probably took you half a day or a day to even find that, Deb, and it's a day, you know...
Well, that's fortunate. I can find my stuff easily. We're just kidding.
Well, I always tell them, "Don't touch anything on my desk because I know where it is," but, you know...
I knew exactly which cabinet, which folder it was in, and I went to it right, Amy saw, I went to it right away. The problem is to really collect this and make sure it's accurate and what we have and to double check. I mean, it does take a long time, but it's worth the time if it shows us how we're doing. I'm just not sure if it's worth the time twice a year. I guess that's...
I think that's what bothers me because it's a time drain.
I think, Martha, your point's valid. I think as an alternative thought, though, maybe we can provide better guidance to you guys in terms of what we'd like to see on a mid-year basis and not the whole thing. Because I agree, some of the strategic plan elements. But I do think there's value to demonstrating rigor around measuring academic progress. I do. So I think it's a good point, though. I think it's something we ought to think about more.
Reback what we want at mid-year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is...
Capsulize rather than...
Now, as a committee, and I think Deb said this upfront, now as a committee, we talked about and then agreed we wanted to have a mid-year review. Now that we're at that point, you know, it's probably smart to reflect, as Martha's doing, on is it all worth the reams of paper and the ergs of hours and...
There might just honestly be one objective that seems to be more live, if you will, that you might want to see at mid-year. So I think that's a good thing to discuss when we do our goal setting.
Well, not only that, but I think when you think about the parents within the system and are they happy with their children, what they're doing, is there progress? What value does this have to them versus them spending their time looking on new and creative ways to do things better for our students or on a day-to-day basis and interacting with the principals and their department heads and whatever to get a grasp on what do we need to make this better for the students on a day-to-day basis? This material is going to be what it is, Bruce, not how you spin it. But I would rather see their time spent on that, per se, than trying to put together in a two to three days and taking away from that one-on-one with their administrators. I just...
So I think what I hear you saying is, I think you agree, the value of the strategic plan is to show people we have a plan and a direction and certain things we're trying to focus on. But how often we need to talk about the progress we've made is what's the question.
In my 15 years on the committee, not one person has ever called me and said, "Hey, Martha, what's happening with the strategic plan?" Come on, I'm being real, seriously. Has anybody ever called anybody on this committee and said, "Where do we stand on the strategic plan?" They know it's in place, they know we have to do it, and we do it, and we follow through on it. But I think the complaints we hear or the concerns we have are, you know, "I'm worried about my child. Is he getting enough? Are we doing enough? I'm not seeing the progress I want to see." Those are day-to-day things that we have to deal with, and I just think, to me, this is a time drain.
I agree with what you're saying, Martha. You know, I think in the spirit of it, you know, how much time is... The only thing I would say is that the strategic plan, as stated, is a live document. And so collecting this data is a way to continue to, for us to be reflecting on the strategic plan to say, are we moving in the right direction? So I think the point is, let's make sure that we're not seeing some significant dips mid-year, maybe, which might, I think, was part of our rationale for, let's have a mid-year report, so that if we need to do something differently because we're not moving in the right direction, it's a live document, let's respond now as opposed to saying, wow, it's the year this was going on? How can we...
It's true, but the problem is, the academic data we collect is annual.
That's right.
Well, yes, I know, but I'm thinking that that might have been part of our mindset of saying, let's totally... Let's be looking at it. But I agree, if it is annual, I just, I know there is so much that comes your way, and I guess we want to make the most use of your time, too, so.
I mean, having, you know, worked, it doesn't really matter. We're under a strategic plan, they didn't really mean anything. I think that's worse because then you don't know what you're supposed to be doing if there's nothing really in it. So I actually like, I think this does keep our focus. And I would say, you know, in terms of what we do as administrators, a lot of our job is that bird's-eye view, which this represents, which where are we trying to go? And can we see it? And what's the plan? As much as it is the day-to-day nitty-gritty, I wouldn't want to lose either end.
Right.
And this helps us keep, you know, our eyes on the big prize.
When you look at when this information is available, and the fact that we review MCAS, we know where we stand, to turn around midterm and to regurgitate it and put it on paper, it's not going to change where we were then where we are right now. It just isn't.
Plus, you've seen it in the fall, under the MCAS and baseline judgment. Now you see it again, and you see it at the end of the year. So I think we can drop one of them off, but it's up to you. Your...
Martha, we need to see it three times a year.
Well, you can decide in July. I mean, there's no hurry right now.
It's just a thought.
Highlight, highlight something significant.
Well, maybe what we can do is, instead of asking you guys to update every element of the strategic plan, is maybe focus on one. It seems to be the academic rigor is the one that has a lot of value. The data's the same, but maybe, Amy, what we should do in these mid-year reviews is say, okay, here's where we are in addressing some of these areas. Here's, you know, the initiatives we have in place, and here's where we are midstream. Or something that is progressing as opposed to something that's stagnant for a year.
Thinking about, as we were doing this one, I actually think the one that is most current to be updated is Objective 2. Because when this plan was created a year and a half ago, this objective was only a one-year objective because we didn't have any baseline data on culture and climate and how parents felt and how staff felt. So when you look at Objective 2, that's where we've actually made the most, you know, I will call it concrete progress in terms of getting a system in place. So we have now established a system of perception data. We're about to administer our second culture and climate surveys early spring. So we've got baseline data, and you can see that the third goal says, establish three-year goals related to school culture. And I put them back in there even though you got them back in the fall. But you actually do now have goals that are building-based in district-wide related to culture and climate. So this is actually the one that if we were going to do that pick and choose, I would say it's Objective 2 we should have heard about right now because there are actual things that have happened that didn't exist before.
So why don't we, I'll make a proposal for the committee, but why don't we agree to have, continue to have a mid-year review, but let our leaders tell us which areas to drill down on that would be worth our attention and that are moving?
Well, I think it really comes down to when we meet in July and we set our goals for what we want. I mean, this is what it is because that was one of our thought processes then. But what I'm saying, moving forward, it is something we probably should think about and let them tell us, and us look at it and say, what's valuable, what isn't?
Right.
And what we need, what don't need. So I just think too much is not necessary.
I'm, I agree.
So culture and climate goals, Objective 2. Objective 3, we are working on a new tech plan, which we hope to have for you to see in draft form by July. That is probably the biggest thing that's happening under Objective 3. We do, we've talked about this a lot, but we do want to be in a better place in terms of having a tech plan that can be clearly articulated, that is easily communicated to both the public and the school community. And then on Objective 4, the big thing on Objective 4 was to create that district report card, which we did. So that's our update. Attached to that, I won't talk about it, you know, in detail, but to go along with that is the, is my last, my first year as superintendent last year, I did create an entry plan, and that included focus on key strategies. And the three key strategies were in support of the strategic plan. So what I provided for you, and if you have questions, that's fine. I don't need to go through the whole thing. They really sort of lay out in a little bit more detail a link to Objective 1, which is leadership growth and development, linked, another link to Objective 1, which is about advanced learning for students. And the third is a link to Objective 3, about 21st century skills. So what I provided for you in yellow is where I am with that and with a little code. Either we're just beginning, we're in the early stages, or we're well underway for some of the initiatives that support those objectives in a little bit more detail than you see on the strategic plan. So if you don't have questions, that's where I am, and that's where we are. Nothing, you know, earth-shattering on there.
The hard part for me on both of these topics is, these are things I think we should be looking at throughout the year. And I know you guys are, but as a committee, we don't necessarily, unless we put this kind of mid-year... You know, even just, Deb, for you to say that, you know, to remind us and the public that a technology plan is part of our strategic plan and it's coming in July, I think has value at this time of year. So, but I also agree with Martha's points, and I think we probably all felt the same. When we get the packet and it's this much paper, this isn't...
My glass is like a brain drain.
Yeah, this isn't what we want you doing. So the secret is, how do we boil it down to the salient points, but keep it at a mid... boil it down to the salient points, but keep it at a mid-year review, in my opinion?
I agree. I think we could do it in a fairly easy way, which is to say, if we have a, which likely, if we have a mid-year review of this strategic plan, just for us to say to ourselves, what's new?
Right.
Because I would have pointed out those same things. The first one, Objective One, those are annual measures, which you hear about now over and over three times. So, I don't know if you hear a lot about the academic piece, because you just heard about it in the fall, and you're going to hear about it again when the final report, you know, is issued at the end of the year, the annual update. So, I think it would have been much easier for us just to go through the plan and let you know, like, what's new that you haven't heard about yet? It would be the district report card to remind you that was accomplished, the new tech plan we've started working on. It would be the culture and climate goals are now established. You know, the what's new would be easy to focus on.
Maybe the other thing is to back it up and maybe even present it before you present the budget, because people need to understand, you know, where you've been and where you're going, and why you need the funds to do the things that you do. I mean, when you talk about, you know, when we were before the advisory committee, and you talked about technology and what you needed and why we were trying to expend this money, if these are the goals and the strategies that we're trying to, you know, convey to the public, then it's almost like it needs to be conveyed before you present the budget, because they need to know why we need this money. And so, I don't know. I think it's just putting it all in perspective more than anything else.
Well, that's another option, actually. If we did the end of the year, I'll call it, update, but wait till the fall. You don't want one in June or July and then another.
No, it loses its validity at that point.
So, that's another thing that you could consider.
You know, because people need to know why you're asking for these things, where you're trying to get to.
I just, my worry would be, we have so much reporting already in the fall.
Oh, I know.
The school improvement plans are coming in the fall, because they come every other year now. We've got all the baseline.
But I think it adds validity to what we're asking for, Deb.
Right.
And why we need it, especially with, you know, as a lot of people for many years didn't think we needed technology, and why are we wasting our time and energy on it? And if you don't have technology, you don't have anything, because everything's online and up and coming and.
I don't know if we need to update them. I'm just going to think about that, because we could, I mean, about technology, we could, hopefully, if we have everything planned on, that's going to go toward the advisory. I don't know if the whole strategic plan should be, you know.
No, I'm saying the key points. I'm not saying the whole thing. It's just, if technology's that big thing, then we need to present it a little bit differently, maybe.
A lot of good ideas.
I guess it's up to you to kind of pick and choose what and where we need to go.
Agreed.
But, when we do this, when I saw this, I was like, oh my God.
It's kind of like.
Granddaughter goes, OMG Grandma, what is that? Never.
Hoard.
Yeah, I still like the idea, and I'm sure we'll all keep thinking about it, I still like the idea of saying to Deb and Amy, you know, come to us with what you want to talk about.
Yeah.
I would love to do that.
In this space.
Yeah, instead of all.
On Deb's, you know, entry plan, you know, superintendent evaluation, mid-cycle review, you know, pick an area that you think is worthy of your time and ours, because if it's not, then we don't want you prepping it.
See this, this one piece of paper?
Yes.
Love it.
Yeah.
I know, that's why. Let me just tell you, when I created it and when I updated it, it was not going to be more than one page if it killed me.
Oh, seriously, even if you had to make it smaller, it was only one page.
See how narrow the margins have gotten?
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, you can look at this and you can grasp it, but let me tell you, you know.
It is, it's user-friendly.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to do.
And the yellow, that's even better, love it.
Thanks.
A yellow, oh yeah.
Yellow, okay.
Very much. I like the highlights and the.
And I came up with the, well, I came up with the asterisk because I didn't want to add space.
Yeah.
So, I just thought, I can fit an asterisk in a lot of those boxes, I'm just going to go with that. Asterisk.
Awesome.
I think you were hanging around with that young lady. These are the key selling points.
Is it?
Yep.
That's right.
(laughing).
The kids were great.
The kids were great.
Well, Megan is just enjoying this way too much over there.
(laughing).
The lame duck over there is really enjoying it.
All right, are we ready to move on from this?
Yeah, so let me try to condense this for you. Another requirement on the new Massachusetts evaluation system is that all administrators and educators, from the superintendent to the principals, to all the central office people, to teachers all the way down, as you know, have to have mid-cycle reviews. Now, it is required that all administrators have an annual review. Teachers will be on a two-year cycle eventually, after this first year when we get everybody staggered, but administrators will always be on a one-year cycle, including myself, and we are all obligated to have a mid-cycle review. So, to make this a little bit easier, without going through everything, the purpose, as you know, I explained in the cover memo, it requires a mid-cycle review, and so to prepare for that, I put in some suggested guidelines, but understanding this is your mid-cycle review. So, if you want to change anything that you want to discuss or see next year in the mid-cycle review, that's up to you. This is just guidelines that come from the Massachusetts educator evaluation system. And the whole, the whole goal of this mid-cycle review is really just to foster a dialogue among the committee and with me, and really, you just want to ask yourself a couple of basic questions based on, which is, how am I doing? Am I on the right track? What do you want me to focus on for the rest of the year between now and my summative evaluation at the end of the year? So, it was really, it's as simple as that. So, it's my job to put together sample pieces of evidence. I didn't put everything in, and I have not given you the big binder at the end of the year, although some superintendents are doing that, but we all decided that we have to try to make this more manageable, both for administrators and for the superintendents and for the teachers. So, I'm not going to give you the whole binder again, although I do think it was a good exercise when the system was new, just because the standards are new, and it really allowed all of us to really get to know what the standards entail. But the purpose of the mid-cycle is for me just to give you a few pieces of sample evidence, not everything. So, under community partnerships, I don't mention the turf field or things you knew about. I tried to mention a few things you might not know about, so that you should be saying to yourself at this point, what do you want to say to me at mid-cycle about how I'm coming along with my personal goals for professional practice, student learning, and district improvement goals and other, all of which are topics we've discussed at this table under various other topic items. And when you look at the standards in that big rubric, which I copied again and put in there in case you lost your copy from the big binder, a sample pieces of evidence as to my proficiency in those standards.
Why do we need new copiers?
I don't know. Yeah, why? I don't know, we don't copy anything anymore.
How many pieces have cut down?
The point really between now and the end of the cycle is, based on what you know about how I'm doing, what do you want to say to me at mid-cycle to put me in the best position for a good summative evaluation? And if there are particular standards that you would like to see more documentation between now and the end of my cycle year, which will be this summer and will be reported by beginning of September like we did last year, if there are standards that you think I should focus a little bit more on or that I might need improvement on, tell me now so that I can do a better job providing evidence for you, or work harder on it myself. And also, if there are things that you think I might be above proficient on, that you think you'd like me to collect more evidence that you'd like to see in order to render a more accurate judgment in the summer, that's fine too. But I'm not going to do the big binder, but I am going to continue to collect evidence on the areas that you would like to see, and it could be stated tonight, or it could be after tonight, it could be at any point.
Debbie, are we supposed to take this and fill it out like we did?
Not now.
No, but when?
At the end of the year. You're going to fill out exactly the same forms you did last year, which will be, and then have individual meetings with me, and then provide them to the chair who.
Puts together the composite.
Who puts together the composite. So, the process will be identical to last year, minus the minutia in the binder, because the whole purpose is, once you know me as a superintendent, which you hopefully do, and you see some of the things I do, and I've provided you with some sample evidence at the mid-cycle point, that you should be able to, be able to say to me, these things I don't think I need anymore on, I'm good. But these few pieces, and you can decide after tonight, so no pressure, I would like to see a little bit more on for your summative. And then for the summative, I'm going to address the areas you asked for more evidence for.
Can I ask you a question?
Right.
Who put this whole thing together?
Well, which whole thing are we talking about?
This whole thing from the mass.
Oh, it did the Department of Education.
I mean, did somebody get paid a lot of money to do this?
Well, I don't know.
I can see the value to this when you have a superintendent who's underperforming or a school district that's in trouble, or, but I would propose that until we indicate such to you, Deb, we don't need this. Similar to the last discussion, what I would love you to do on the one-pager is take opportunity at the mid-year point to say, let me tell you about this area I'm really proud of in my last six months, and let me tell you about this area that I'm really working on.
Okay.
And if we want more, it's incumbent upon us to ask for more.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, that's great. So, next year at the mid-cycle, here's a few things I'm working on, I'm really proud of, and here are some things I'm really working on.
And how are you struggling trying to get it done? Because.
Yeah, the challenges.
The challenges of trying to meet these expectations, because there's such a time drain on you for forms and whatever, that, you know, I personally, I want to see a superintendent that's out in the district and visiting the schools and seeing the students and has that connection with the teachers, that there's, you know, a great team spirit.
Well, Debbie definitely has that.
No, she has that, but I'm saying, the more, the more we have to do this.
Yes.
Katie, the less time she has to do that. And I don't think, that's not what I want in a superintendent. Maybe the other people disagree, I don't, I don't know, but I look back over 15 years, and I want that connection between you and our people and our students. And if you have to spend two and a half days in your office putting this together, to me, that's not time.
Pretty much what it took, as I told you.
It's not time spent well, I don't think.
Well, I agree with you, Martha, absolutely. And I think also the challenges that you face in terms of what resources or things that you need from us as a committee for you to accomplish those goals, you know? So, because I see that as the biggest challenge for Debbie.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I see that as.
How do you fit it all in?
Right, exactly. This is such a helpful discussion, because obviously, the system is required by the Department of Education, but we can, especially as we progress, we can customize it to suit us. And I think this discussion's a great example of, even though the mid-cycle review is supposed to be X or Y, we can, the way we go about it can be different. So, I'm totally in support of that, because I mentioned to you when I saw you, and then when Martha called to explain to me how she felt, I thought she was going to, she thought I was going to be surprised by it, but it actually was in sync with how I felt, which is, yes, I have to tell you how I think I'm doing and get feedback from you, but I did worry a little bit last week when I finished this packet that, for the first time, I felt that we're, and I'm going to speak for, I'll speak for Amy as well, because we're the report people, but I felt like we're spending so much time writing reports and documenting and collecting data, that I, for the first time, went home for the weekend worried about time to spend on what I really think the job is, which is, I think, what you all think the job is, or what it should be. So, anything that we can do to streamline the requirements, to still have a productive dialogue, but be able to carry on the business in the way we know we would like to see it done, is a gift, really. We will lose, if we bog you down too much, we will lose that piece that you're doing, and I agree, I think.
Debbie, you know, it's like anything else, when you look at, you know, like standards of care and standards of what you're doing, I had to laugh, Katie, I don't know if you heard on the radio this morning, but, you know, for years, you know, they come up with these standards of care and what you're supposed to do and not do as practitioners or whatever, and they come out with this thing, the American Academy of Pediatricians, that they weren't going to treat kids with air infections, okay? They weren't going to treat them with antibiotics. And I always said, I hope I stay in medicine long enough where I can see that 360 where it would come back. And this morning, I'm driving, and I hear this thing on the radio that says, well, the American Academy of Pediatricians is now saying that we do need to treat these air infections with antibiotics. So, I was like, oh my God, out on the road! I've been saying that for years, you've got a kid with a tip on it and three who thinks he has an ice pick stuck in his ear, and we're not going to treat him! We're just going to let it run its course. So, how many kids ruptured their eardrums, lost their hearing, maybe somebody on the board of pediatrician's child can't hear now, and all of a sudden they're saying, jeez, we really do need to treat these with antibiotics. Hello? I just, I don't know, these standards of care and standards that you have to meet, and it's almost like we've got to come full circle here. This is getting crazy.
Yeah, and we're trying to streamline it for the teachers and principals.
And you've got to.
But they're, just so you know, what I'm feeling trickles down to the principals, trickles down to the teachers. So, we are working hard this year with our educator evaluation working group and with the principals, to, as we go through this year and learn, to also try to streamline it, to still stay, I mean, you see I put the little diagram of the cycle, we're still following the cycle, we'll still, I'll still do a self-assessment. You'll, the next step is you'll do a summative eval, I'll do my own self-assessment, I'll set new goals for next year, I will then implement the plan. We'll be sitting here mid-cycle next year, having a more, maybe, informal discussion, and then there'll be another summative. So, we have to follow the cycle, but how we, how we are able to accomplish the steps of the cycle, I think we can customize.
I have to tell you, when I picked up the packet and went to open it, I said, what if there's a book in here, you know? A book from the state or something that this can't all this stuff we've got to look through, you know?
But, I mean, the last two things I put in the gallons are really what we're here for tonight, which is, what questions or concerns do you have at this midpoint of my evaluation cycle, and what would you like me to document more, or what direction would you like me to focus on for the rest of the year? And that's, that's pretty much, all this boils down to a couple of simple questions.
I will say that I think it was helpful to see the big binder in the fall and to see some of the information that you put together, so that we know what sort of documentation to ask for if we feel there's a need. I don't feel there's a need at that point, but I do think it was helpful, at least as a newcomer to the school committee, to see the kind of evidence or backup documentation. Maybe that's the lawyer in me that's talking, I don't know, but I found it very instructive, and thank you for the effort that it took to put together.
It was, it was new to all of us, even to them.
Right. I do think, you know, to stay on the positive side, the whole superintendent rubric, while it looks like a monster, I really do believe it helps define the job in a way that it's never been done before, and it defines it the same for every superintendent in the Commonwealth, and that was never done before. So, I have no problem with the standards or the level of accountability or the broad aspects of the job that it defines, as well for the administrators. I think that the problem, the challenges, I won't say problem, the challenges we're experiencing at the teacher level, at the principal level, and now you see sitting here, is the logistics of the process and the documentation piece. So, any, anything that we get from you, we can then take the feedback back and maybe streamline it for all of our staff.
And it's not just you, it also falls on Amy. I'm sure you're as bogged down in some of this as Debbie is.
Well, I evaluate all the administrators, and they turn around and evaluate other people, and so what you're experiencing here is just snowballing, truly, right down to the teachers.
It's a time drain.
This first year, as we've said, is going to be the toughest for all of us, but it'll be a good learning experience, and we'll go from there.
So, just for clarity's sake, so, we will follow the full process for the full year.
Yes.
But for mid-year, I think some of the comments we've made and direction hopefully will be valuable. So, Deb, if you were a more fragile superintendent, I might not, I might not pose this, but since we're on your mid-year review.
Sure.
Why don't you, just a couple of sentences, looking at the one-pager.
Oh, the, well, the one-pager, like that one little piece.
Hang on, just on a couple of areas.
On my one-page.
So, just off the top of your head, mid-year.
Okay.
You know how we said something that you're working on and something that you're proud of? Anything come to mind that you want to?
Oh, you want to surprise me with a surprise question?
Yeah, that's what I said, if you were, if you were.
A fragile.
Fragile.
All right, yes. I can, I'm not fragile.
I know, that's why I was, that's why I felt comfortable asking.
Yes, I'll tell you what I'm most proud of. If you could go into my, okay, you see there's a educator evaluation survey attached to my professional goals. This first packet, superintendent's evaluation, paper clipped to the goals, right here, it's this, it looks like this, this educator evaluation survey.
Okay. Okay.
I am really proud of that, as we all are. Because we are the only district that I know that was brave enough, or maybe I'll use a new word, not fragile. And so, we, we have a wonderful educator evaluation working group, which is twelve teachers and six administrators. And we started meeting a year and a half ago in order to plan for the implementation of this new system. And they are the ones that helped us with the collective bargaining language. And we did all that work together, truly collaboratively, so it wasn't administrative function that this is what's gonna happen to you. It truly was an effort. Amy and I co-chair that group. And we asked the people who volunteered to be on that committee to stay for two years, make a two-year commitment. So, work with us all of last year, and we meet twice a month, all of last year to plan for the implementation. And, and that is really why we were so successful in being able to bring it to you by early June and say, the association's ready to go, as well as we are, because they were really instrumental in the process. And they have stuck with us this year to help us work through the challenges of implementation, in terms of the logistics. So, that last fall, that working group, we together crafted this survey that we asked teachers, basically, how's it going? And in most of the districts I know, you know, it's, it's, it can be really challenging. So, as you know, lots of them didn't even have agreements by the deadline, you know, in terms of collective bargaining agreements for the new educator. But we're the only ones that we know that asked some bold questions. So, we asked bold questions of our staff and we're prepared to hear whatever it is they have to say, because if we don't know how they honestly feel and how the experience has been for them, we won't know what to work harder on to make it better. So, we asked things like, I'll just give you some examples. How hard was it to write your professional practice goal? And it was easy, it was easy, fairly easy, fairly difficult, difficult. And how hard was it to write your student learning goal? Because every educator had to have a professional practice goal and a student learning goal. Same thing. And you can see on slide four, we got the feedback of how they felt it, because we knew that if one was really a lot harder to write than the other, we would provide specific professional development on the one they found harder or whatever it is they want. So, we, we, I'd say we got better than we expected. We had over half of our people saying they found it difficult or very difficult, but all in the fifty, fifty-something percentile. So, we didn't have an overwhelming of people saying it was ridiculously hard, we couldn't even do it. And we got some really good, we did have some training.
But is it just because they've never, obviously, done it before?
Well, they, they do write goals, but not these type of SMART goals. We had some PD that we arranged for in the summer, but it was a snapshot, a couple of hours, and this is the first time they actually had to do it. Then we asked things like, how comfortable were you taking risks setting your goals? And this, to me, was one of the most important questions, because we didn't want people to just write goals they knew they could maybe safely achieve because the first year or so, anxiety-producing or intimidating. They were, how comfortable are you taking risks? And you can see that the vast majority of our people said they were fairly comfortable or very comfortable taking risks. And you really wanna see that in, in a staff, because that's the whole idea. Take a risk, set a goal you're not sure about if it's gonna be good for kids. Don't just go with what's safe. We asked them, well, at this point, what's your level of confidence writing SMART goals, which was fairly strong. We were happy with that. Even more importantly, we asked, did you receive feedback from your evaluator about your goals? So, this means hand, sitting down, talking, did you receive, now, not everybody wanted, asked for feedback about their goals. So, we weren't necessarily expecting a hundred percent. But we actually had ninety-six percent of our staff said, yes, I received feedback on, on my goals, my evaluator. And then we said, if you did receive feedback, how helpful was it? Ninety-eight percent said it was really helpful.
It's amazing.
So, those numbers were incredible. So, what this tells us is, even though this is logistically very difficult for us to implement, we've got administrators here who are really investing a lot of time with their staff to, to try to do it right or as well as we can the first time out, knowing we're, it's a learning experience for all of us. Then we asked questions about overall, how well do you understand the rubric that pertains to you? That's very important. And we know that's gonna grow as they actually use it. Remember, this, this was, this, this survey was in the fall. So, we asked questions about what happened to them just in the first two to three months of the implementation of this system. And that's all. We limited the questions to just what they had just finished experiencing from September to November. And then we asked about how confident you with self-evaluation, with developing your educator plan. And then we asked, this is one of the key questions, how comfortable do you feel right now in terms of having open and honest dialogue with your evaluator? And we had overall ninety-four percent of our staff saying they were, oh, that should say, yeah, confident. No, that should be comfortable. Sorry, I didn't fix that. It's, the question was how comfortable you feel. So, when you look down below, it should say ver- fairly comfortable or very comfortable. The K-12 insight put the wrong word on this, and I fixed it on my slide, but I copied the wrong copy for you. So, ninety-four percent of our staff said they were fairly comfortable or very comfortable, having open and honest dialogue with their evaluator. That, to me, was, I mean, that slide was a wonderful gift, because that's what you hope for. That as hard as this is, that people feel comfortable having open, honest dialogue about where they're trying to go, instructionally, what they're trying to do. In fact, when, when we had a conference call with the company, when they first created this and we went over our evalu- even they said, like, you have some wows in here. And, um, so, anyway, we have now a second survey, ready to go out in the next ten days or so, to our, all of our staff members again, so that we can collect information about how they felt about what's happened to them in the last couple of months. So, how much progress have you made to your goals? How challenging is it to collect evidence for the, for standards, for any of your goals? We use the baseline edge software. How comfortable are you with that now that we've had training? So, whatever's been going on, we're asking them how that's going, so that we can customize our level of support and the specific areas of support. No one we know is doing this kind of survey, and I did share this with the superintendent, so I included an email from Dr. John Doria, as you know, because he was so wowed by, first of all, what questions we were asking, but the results that we got, that I have shared this with the superintendent's group. So, I feel most proud that we are in a district where we have those kind of relationships, that we can feel comfortable ourselves asking the hard questions that other people, like, I'm not asking that. You know, I'm not gonna, I don't wanna know that. And that we are open enough to be taking the last results and, and we're gonna keep doing it and see if it gets better for them in the fall. Is it easier next fall to write SMART goals? We hope it is. So, I'm gonna say that is what I'm most proud of, long story short. Or, short story long, more accurately. What am I really working hard on?
Everything.
Every, I was gonna say. This, the evaluation system. I mean, it is, quite honestly, dominating almost all of our work this year, right down to the classroom level.
Now, I'm really gonna pat Debbie on the badge. I, I think, you know, when I think about all the time she has to spend on this and one of my objectives is to make sure she's out and about, about her people per se, not only the administrators, but her teachers. Debbie, I have to tell you, I hear over and over from some of your former teachers that I see from time to time, and how much they miss you and where you were and how accessible you were. And I think the one thing that really sticks in my heart is when they say to me, no matter when we saw her, no matter when we talked to her, we could always get an honest answer, whatever she gave us for information, we could take back and we could apply it in the classroom. And you, you have that special quality. And I think that's why in my heart, I want you amongst everybody that works in the system, because you're such a positive, powerful driving force within the system. And that was one of the things that I always loved about you before, during, and after. And I, I think that's something that we should be very proud of, in that no matter who approaches you, no matter who asks you a question, they feel very comfortable with you. They know your answers are honest and sincere. They can take it back to them. You're, you're very approachable. And I think that's why I wanna make sure that you have the time to spend with them, because I think they can ask you these questions, and what does this mean? And, you know, they can ask it of their administrators, but I think it's very important for them to be able to ask it of our superintendent. And that's why I feel so strongly about you being in the schools and spending some time.
Appreciate that, because that is what I wanna be. I actually did spend a couple of hours last week with one of my former colleagues in the other district who needed a little bit of time. And this Friday, I'm having
They're still upset with me, but that's okay.
It's been five years. And they still like, what are you doing Friday? We wanna meet for dinner. So, that's nice.
Just going along with that, Martha, I think too, that's probably obvious, but needs to be stated, is that you are so knowledgeable. So, that when you are out amongst other, the other educators, you are teaching them.
Every time.
You are the role model for them. And so, that's why you need to be out there as well. So, again.
And the reason I asked you to just go through this
Yes.
is because I think that ten-minute conversation we just had was more valuable than the inch of paper.
Oh. Well, next year's gonna be really fun. What am I most proud of? What am I really working on and challenges I face?
And I would agree. I think the progress you are, I mean, just a little bit of feedback, no surprise from everybody, from what everybody else has said. But I do think the work that you and Amy and the team are making on this new process is commendable. So, you know.
I credit them.
Well, I don't think everybody fears it the way they maybe would have feared it because of the direction they get from each other.
Well, let's wait till the end of the year. It's hard. But you know what? I keep saying, at least yours isn't on TV, so it'll be all right. I think that's what, but I do keep saying, it'll be all right. It doesn't have to be perfect. It'll be okay.
It's a learning curve.
Reassuring. Because we all feel, we're in the same boat. And I wanna credit Amy, because she's done a lot, a lot. She's our baseline edge expert.
A good team.
Yes.
So, I guess the same answer for both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to tell me now about what you'd like me to document more, or do you wanna think about it? Just let me know.
We'll, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Don't hold your breath.
I, you just, we, I think we just need to digest it. I mean, seriously, this was a lot to, I was almost tempted to say, guys, seriously? I don't think we can deal with this tonight. We need to digest it ourselves, and there just was so much of it. But I, I think this is much better.
I'll just keep asking you, because I don't wanna get to the end. The purpose of the ongoing conversation and dialogue in this is so we don't get to the summative and you're, you're unwilling or unable to make a judgment, saying, gee, I just didn't know. I didn't give us any of that or we haven't talked about it. So, that's the whole point, so that we're set up to have as much information as you need and that I've done my job providing you with, with that evidence.
I don't think that's gonna happen this time.
I don't know. Martha, do you want another?
Oh, my God.
I'm good with less documentation.
Yes.
Hopefully, we provided you with some helpful direction. And I think, and Debbie, tell me if you disagree, but I suspect you would agree with this. But I, I think going forward, you know, as we learn more about this, if you work with the chair to talk about, what do we wanna bring to the committee? We can probably narrow this down for you.
That'd be great. I think, I think what we're experiencing is exactly what the teachers, in the first year, we're doing everything the way they say we're supposed to. And then we learn from it and do, and then do it the way we want.
We're gonna do it works and what's best for our system. And I think that's where we redefine it.
I appreciate all of that.
Let's move on to Amy's mid-year eval and then we'll do Phil's.
And we don't have to do either one of those. Well, you make sure you drop Matina's house, okay? Because she's a newbie and she needs to read it all, okay?
I will.
Oh, you will too. We know you will.
And then you can give us a synopsis, okay?
I think maybe we should have, like, Willie write it and with the, you know, caveat that he can get a nice graduation gift if he puts it together in a timely fashion.
In a timely fashion.
That work for you? Good.
So, you just said you can't joke about giving out more papers.
Right. He's hilarious.
Okay, are we ready to move on to policies?
Yes.
Second reading of policies. Did any of you have any questions or things that people wanted clarified? Pretty straightforward with what we did?
Wendy, these are the corrections you gave us tonight, right?
Those three?
Okay.
Right.
So, do we have to just, can we just mention the?
I think you have to mention each one, and we have to vote on each one that we pass.
Right, but like
We can waive the reading.
We can waive the reading.
Well, we, yes, we can waive the reading, especially as not a
You just have to say that it's such and such with the amendments.
Right, okay.
Okay. Take it away.
Oh, okay. So, I'll meet here. So, non-discrimination, file AC, as amended.
I make a motion, we accept.
I'll second. All in favor? Five zero zero.
How easy this is gonna be?
Non-discrimination on the basis of sex, file ACA, as amended.
Make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor? Five zero zero.
Query requirements, file ADDA, as amended.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Sorry, I'm gonna stop so you can jump in.
No, no, you're gonna roll.
You're on a roll, this is fine.
Keep it going. Consistency.
Did we vote?
We did.
A vote?
Oh, yeah.
Five zero zero.
Query requirements, file ADDA-r, as amended.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Information concerning the process in correcting a criminal record, file ADDA-e-1, as amended.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Okay, now we have this corrected one.
Throw that one out.
Okay.
Well, that would be as amended.
Executive sessions, file BEC, as amended.
Make a motion.
Second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Emergency plans, file EBC, as amended.
Make a motion.
Second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Student transportation, file EEA, as amended.
Make a motion.
Second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Affirmative action for recruitment of staff, file GBA, as amended.
Make a motion.
Second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Licensed employee hiring, file GCF, as amended.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Instructional materials, file IJ, as amended.
Make a motion.
Second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Equal educational opportunities, file JV, as amended.
Make a motion.
I'll second. All vote? Five zero zero.
Student to student harassment, file JVA, as amended.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Assignment of students to schools, file JCA, as amended.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Vote? Five zero zero.
School choice, file JFBB, as amended.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Student health services and requirements, file JLC, as amended.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Vote? Five zero zero.
Okay, I have a request that we make sure that before we vote for, we vote for school committee members, that the, um, we vote on the whole policy book. It's not just on the amendments. We have to vote to, to continue to accept what's in that policy book before we turn over. We're supposed to do that yearly, okay? Is it? Okay. Thanks, Wendy.
And Debbie, maybe just a comment in case any of the public missed Tina's excellent reading of these last meeting. Just for public knowledge, these all have minimal changes and cleanups. These weren't substantive change.
No, and many of them were cross-reference things, you know, tightening up the language and just legally, we had to make the additions to them from that, by law.
That's why we have them on board. Well, it's, it's good, because it saves us falling behind and losing track of what's important.
That's right.
Good job, Tina and Bev.
And Wendy.
And Wendy. Good point.
Statement of interest for Borough Elementary School, Mr. Spinelli and Mr. Yukla.
The document you have in your package was just a placeholder, the one I handed out before the meeting.
Yes.
Is the actual vote that you need to take. And basically, under the MSBA's process, there was a two-step vote, first one by the school committee approving the, or authorizing the superintendent to move forward with the statement of interest. It is strictly a formality in which we are submitting our request and why we believe the building needs to be done. It is not a commitment by the town and is not a commitment by the school committee of anything more than the fact of the point to submit our, our interest in renovating the Borough School. The, the way the MSBA is structured is after we approve that, then I also have to bring it to the selectmen for their approval.
Is this like a placeholder for us to totally speak?
This is, this is just the start of the process.
Yeah.
So, we will, you know, this, your, your vote on this and the selectmen's vote, plus the full package of what we intend to do, why we intend to do it, what the, all the issues are with the building, all go together as one package in front of them. You know, last year, when they opened it up, they had a couple hundred people get in. Only about thirty or forty projects got approved. So, you know, this is, there's no guarantee to this at all, but it's, without at least making this step, we have no chance.
No idea.
I do think we should go through, though, Bill and Tony Solly and I toured the Borough a week ago Friday, just to make sure we had everything and, you know, that we were knowledgeable about everything that really needed to be done. And so, there are a couple of things I, I know that Bill wants to mention that I think we should mention tonight that you see in here. That it's, you know, the things you're expecting, the roof, the heating system, stuff like that are the things that maybe we'd like to talk about, some of the things you might not have been expected to see. And I think Bill can speak to that. And I'll then follow up with some ties that we've had recently to some of them, so.
Right. And, and just so you understand, the reason that the, you know, step, item five and item seven, the, the starting point of this is there's eight reasons why you would be going for a statement of interest. One's as simple as the structure of a building is just so bad that you need to take it down and put up a new one, okay? Life safety, you know, prevention of a loss of accreditation, because you're not capable of doing your programs, things like that. So, the two that we really fall under on the Borough School is the replacement renovation upgrade of what's within the building for efficiencies and program usage are the two that we're basically having to deal with. And this, you know, the second one, which is the program usage, really is, is probably something that we hadn't discussed in the past as far as what we planned to do, but it came out a lot when we did take a review of the building. The, the fact that we did, you know, in the first one, number five, you know, that's probably the boilerplate that we would do and have done in, in all the buildings when we finally hit them. So, again, just like you saw here, the new roof, the new windows, you know, updating the electrical systems, the plumbing systems, all of that, you know, you all kind of, I believe it would expect that we're gonna have to go through the Borough. It's a forty-six-year-old building. You know, we did spend a fair amount of money doing the paving this year, but You know, we did spend a fair amount of money doing the paving this year, but other than that, and the roof about seven years ago was patched, but that was only to give by some more time so that we could get to a full program. But other than that, you know, not a lot has been done. Some asbestos abatement obviously has been done over the years, but there's still even more of that to do. The second one, the replacement, you know, or addition to an obsolete building in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements, there's two phases to that. Obviously, the program phase, what we're trying to accomplish within the building, and then the local ordinance, state and local ordinances. So, under the program side, one of the things we realized once we, once you shifted the pre-K over to the Borough School was, first of all, there weren't classes that were classrooms that were sized appropriately for a pre-K class. So we are in undersized classes trying to, you know, perform the program and service that that's supposed to be. So, and in looking at the building, there's really no way to expand that without expanding the building in some way. The Borough School is actually built, if you look at it kind of from up above, it, one side of the, where the pre-K is now, actually is about three classrooms shorter than the other side. So obviously, there was a thought at one point in time, but probably not a need, so that was never really expanded. The thing that we noticed with working in the building is, is that in order to accomplish having the pre-K there, it took other program space away from that building, which is not consistent with what's in the Taylor and the IGO. One of them is computer lab space. We have barely a half lab over there, which is very tough, so when you try to bring a class in, you can only bring it in...
Half a class.
Half a class at a time and go through the process.
There's only eleven or twelve stations in that room.
Right, so that's problematic.
Half go to the library and half go to the computer and then, or, even the day we were there, the art teacher was trying to use the computer lab for some art and she had half the kids in the, in the art room, half the kids in the studio, but she was running back and forth. So if you really want to use the computer for an art project, you can't put all of them in at once. So it is the only school that we only have, we call it a mini lab, but it's actually a half a lab.
Forty-six years ago, we didn't think of this.
Right, well, and that...
Well, they didn't exist.
You know, we've talked about that, even though the high school technically was built for a much larger population, again, we didn't have the type of room requirements that we have today and we could never fit that population that it was technically built for now with these rooms.
One question is, you know, when we think about long-range planning and what we're gonna do, the intention is to always keep the pre-K...
Yes.
Down there, okay. So if that's our intention, then certainly we have to make it more manageable space-wise.
And this was reinforced, actually, when Amy and the principals and the early childhood committee, which we have an early childhood kindergarten committee, and we're involved with kindergarten accreditation. If we continue, if you want to continue receiving money from the state for the full-day kindergarten grant, you have to eventually become accredited for kindergarten. It's like the high school process, but it's designed for early childhood programs. So the group had just come in two weeks ago, two, one of the ladies from Michigan, where they are to look at all of our kindergarten programs at all three schools and they will, they go around, look at all the facilities and they commented. They look at the preschool and the kindergarten programs and they also commented that we had undersized rooms. So we said, well, you're, it's interesting you're saying that because we were about to start on that. So, under the national guidelines for accreditation for early childhood programs and under the states, we have undersized rooms for that program.
Can we do something similar to what we did when we did the high school project in that we should take a video crew down there like we did, get them from the high school...
Sure.
And go through that building and document, you know, like we did here, what, where, where our shotfalls are and what we need to do to make this the type of school that it needs to be. And I think that's, you know, something we can put on cable, we can show people, because visuals mean a lot to people. I mean, people don't think about the fact that you've got to upgrade the lighting and you, you know, what it's gonna save you and, and I think we just need to be able to present this to the public that this is a great little school, but we need to bring it up.
Well, and again, I think kudos to the school committee for maintaining buildings to the level that you have, because otherwise, we wouldn't even have a structure that's worth dealing with. We definitely do have a structure. I mean, the unfortunate thing here is if we are not successful in this round on the grants and get beat out by other school districts for whatever reason, maybe they have more urgent needs, but we are very close to that time in which we are going to need to just spend money, period, whether we get this or not, from the roofing point of view. Because once I lose that roof, I lose the integrity of the building.
Oh, absolutely.
And I have a lot more problems going to try to keep it up.
You know, when they started in with the renovations versus, remember when we had to renovate and expand, otherwise you couldn't get money? And then there were punishing schools like us who maintained their schools because we saw the value in it. So I, hopefully, I'd say hopefully, they look more favorable upon somebody like us who's trying to maintain what we have and continue the growth that we need in the development in the area. And I, I just, God, it would irritate my soul to think that they would oversee, overlook a project like ours when we have a good track record with what we've done here. And I think that should help us, I would like to think it does, Bill, but...
I would too. I think the, I think to Deb's point, the, the other thing with the computer lab, being able to get back to a full-size and maybe if not even a little bit larger than a full-size computer lab, is that a lot of the testing that the state is pushing towards will be...
Online.
Online testing. And again, having a building that really doesn't satisfy that need and will never be able to is gonna be problematic for us as we go forward as well. The ADA in the Borough School, I have to be honest with you, is probably one of the biggest issues we face. Because amazingly to me, in most buildings that we walk through, the IGO, which is an older building, going into the bathrooms, you're walking through full-size doors, so very accessible relative to what I could do within the gang labs and stuff like that. This building, the doors are so small that if we have a child with a wheelchair, they cannot get into those bathrooms. Now, we do have some, obviously, adult bathrooms that we can use as alternatives that are handicap accessible, but it's not what it's supposed to be. So we actually face a bigger issue with the plumbing and things. We kind of preliminarily figured out ways to make, where we could expand those rooms and I think between Deb and Tony and I, we kind of looked it all out and we at least have options, which I feel good. I don't have to take the whole building down to do it, but, you know, I do have a way of getting there. But there are, that's an issue that's much more significant in that building than even what we had faced here as...
But you know, and again, the public needs to know what we're up against because anytime you open up a building, you have to make it ADA compliant.
Yes.
And we're not gonna be, plain and simple, we're not gonna be. So it's gonna be a big chunk of change to make it compatible.
And when you think about it, we also, although this is not something that the MSBA looks for as a qualifying point, but we're doing it in our buildings anyways, all of our electrical systems and our backup energy systems, you know, generators and stuff like that are old. So in this particular building, again, it's a forty-six-year-old generator. It runs quite often and it is our, you know, our location...
I was gonna say the shelter.
Shelter, so, you know, we'd be looking to upgrade our electrical like we've done in the other buildings, but also to upgrade the, that, you know, emergency power source. You know, they, it's the only, well, no, it's not, it's, of all the buildings we have, there are only two that don't have true gym, gym floors, which is a hard, very hard surface. We get written up every time by the insurance company as to what the flooring in there is. It's a tile floor on cement. Can't get much harder. So, you know, obviously, what we'd like to do is remove that. Again, it's a center-located gym. It's a, it's not a huge gym, but it's a good size for the size of building it is. But if we were to recondition that and put in a hardwood floor, which has, you know, some spring to it, again, it's a, I think, an upgrade for the children as well as the safety of the children there too. So, we really are looking at this building and there are, you know, we've learned some lessons in the last process as far as how we were going to document going forward on this, but we really are going to outline every issue. You know, just on the notes that we took through in that day, I ended up with two pages worth of, you know, detailed issues that go throughout the building. It goes down to as simple as the fact that they have no storage space within the building, so we're using regular space. You walk into their auditorium, there's just stuff piled in the back, again, not probably meeting any real code requirements, but, you know, so there's no storage at all. And again, when you look at these older classrooms, they assumed that within the classroom, the amount of storage they had was sufficient and times have changed and what we need to keep in the classrooms has changed, so.
Can I ask you something? As far as that gym area goes, could that be a room that could be ever converted into a lab area? And if we're gonna, if we're gonna wind up having to add on a couple rooms, would we be better off adding a gym area? Because you put the kids in there and you have an activity and you want the parents to come, there's no place for anybody to even stand, Bill.
But a gym, being the two-story-high kind of thing, we're actually okay with the gym. I mean, it's not ideal, but neither is the Taylor's, if you think about it.
But I mean, even if you want to bring the, if the parents want to come in and watch, if the kids are doing something, I've been there, there's no place for you to stand.
No, there isn't in Taylor either.
Really?
No, the classrooms are all, not only is it the same size, but classrooms are all around it.
Yeah, but that's a bigger area than the gym area that we have.
Just, it seems like it, but you've got two-story walls kind of thing. It's about the same with the same, you know, six-foot clearance all the way around. But for our purpose, we really need the two classroom space and then we can re, take the lab, the mini lab out of where it is and use another room for that if we move the preschool out.
If you move the, okay.
So, to build another gym, I think you're really gonna add on...
Big expense.
And then you're left with a room that's two stories high, what are you gonna do with that?
Make some storage up there.
Well, we were thinking about the kitchen for that, actually. They came up with a good idea.
Yeah, the, well, and that actually brings up a point on number five above. You know, one of the lessons I learned in the high school renovation is that we didn't really do what we should have done on the kitchen area in this building. And, you know, that was really because at the time, we were looking at the science program and a number of other things. And, you know, I hate to say it, but I think cafeterias in general are afterthoughts. Obviously, now with all the changes we've had to go through and the way we are actually trying to prepare and actually cook more foods, having the right equipment to do that and the right layout is very important. You know, not all of our equipment's forty-six years old, most of it is, but, you know, we've obviously upgraded a few things, which we would keep. But I think, you know, what I've asked Allison to do as part of our program here is to also go through that and how would we relay it out and what equipment does need to be, you know, replaced with something that actually will do the job that we need to do now.
Do you actually need more space or you just need to reconfigure what you have?
We think we just need to reconfigure. We're kind of fortunate in the space that's in there and I think we can kind of make it work, but it is, it's definitely, the big mistake we made at the, at the high school as an example, and I did do part of it with some funding at the end of the year last year, is, is to open up the walls between the kitchen itself and the cafeteria, and the eating area, because the lines are what get very confining. So as you know, we kind of took down part of the wall, but I probably need to do another two here over time, just to make it much more accessible in and out, so. So basically, while these aren't everything that's on the final plan, these are the things, you know, I need to highlight some things for you that you're understanding what you're approving to go forward. But in this particular case, it is a full renovation of that building. Virtually, you know, classroom storage space needs to be upgraded and replaced. There's a lot of just small cabinets that people have bought over time and put in place that aren't, you know, really efficient in how we use the space. All of the windows and doors, from an energy point of view as well as a security point of view, really need to be upgraded and fixed at this point. Installation in the, above the roof, the roof itself, the heating system totally needs to be replaced. The electrical system obviously needs to be done. Lighting, ceilings, flooring, you know, this is really a wall-to-wall, you know, floor-to-ceiling gut. And we're going to have to do it the same way we did the high school, which will be a phased approach. What we'll have to do is the biggest parts of the projects during the summer and we'll have to do, you know, second shift, getting through it. I mean, it's, it's never the best way to go, but we have no space to relocate the entire school. It's not cost-effective and I would argue with the state, you know, in tall blue, to go out and buy temporary, you know, rooms to try to do it off of one of the other buildings type of thing. So I think if we can do it the same way we did the high school, we survived it. It's not the best, but I think if the parents understand that the goal is in the end to have a much better product.
I think we made it workable, Bill.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure there were days where everybody was kind of scratching their head, but my other concern is to look at the town...
Come back some mornings and there'd be no floors.
Right.
What happened to those? Bill, I think the only thing... What's going on in the town building wise, and his two pre-K rooms gonna be enough. Because if this town still has a lot of potential for building, it's so hard to judge, you know, how many kids we're gonna have next year or the following year or five years from now. So if you're talking a project that's gonna be a few years down the, down the road before we get into it, I want to make sure that we know what we've got for buildable space in this town and are we really thinking enough ahead that is two pre-K rooms or should we be putting on three rooms because of the potential? I don't know, I think it's something we really need to take a look at.
Our school population, though, has been pretty stable, if not, you know, dwindling a little bit, but at least flat.
Yeah, but if you look at some of these houses and how big they are and what the potential is for children and if the older people move out...
We have a little bit of growth in terms of, in each school, in terms of classrooms.
With the kitchen and say, we should have done this or gee, we needed that other room and how do you add it on at this point? I'd rather have an extra room and use it for something functional than look back and say, we really need another room, where are we gonna find it?
I would say that we could, you know, you could always sit there and justify in your mind, if you leveled the building and put up the perfect building, how much better that could be. I think what the town has done has been be kind of frugal with the way we approach things, but they still end up with as good a product as you can using that approach. And, you know, again, if someone said, if I ripped down this high school and put up a brand-new one, would I have done things differently? Absolutely. But the reality is, we had a very good structure to deal with and I think the town, you know, got the biggest bang for the buck out of doing what we're doing. I think if we do the same thing with the Borough, I understand your point and I wouldn't suggest that we undersize it, and I don't think we are. I think we've been very thoughtful on how we've looked at the space.
I just think there's still potential for growth in this town and even though we're not seeing the numbers jumping up, they could. And I don't want to look back and say, geez, we should have.
I think, I think our overall approach has been, you know, as Deb said, the, with the size classes that we have, you know, you could absorb some that you're going through within the existing structures that we have. We know the Ahern was built with a, with those open space concepts and if you remember, all of those are designed that you just literally drop a wall and everything's above the ceilings and comes down. We know that's got plenty of space to be able to basically add almost another eight classrooms there. And then the high school, again, I think, you know, based on our class sizes and stuff, we still have growth. So I think overall, and it's part of the questions that they're asking is, you know, have you really thought this whole plan out and are you capable of living with ups and downs within your district? And I think, I think these two classrooms would make that difference in that building and the district overall.
Based on everything we know now or can predict now, we're comfortable with adding two rooms. That doesn't mean that four years from now, something unexpected couldn't be present in the town, but based on everything we know and or can see trends, we're comfortable with adding two. I'd definitely be uncomfortable not adding the two.
Oh, absolutely.
But, because when you really go over there and see what the needs are, it's like, okay, it's very clear.
And we have the space there, we can do this.
Yeah, I still have to go sit down with Bill Kessbar and kind of finalize exactly how the layout works, but, you know, if it works the way we think it does, it's...
So it would be like when you go into the cafeteria and then take a left, you know, go in the back and take a left, that end of the building kind of ends abruptly there where the front goes out.
Yeah, well, it's hard to tell from the front that it doesn't match up.
Right, it's just gonna keep going out to the left in the back, toward the back-end driveway that comes off of Culca.
Which is actually nice because that's where our pre-K pickup, the pickup is. So we'll get, we'll get the hallway and everything a little closer to the pickup spot, which kind of works well too. So the overall plan actually works nicely for what we need to do.
Programmatically, it really fits.
So I would make a motion to support the statement of interest forum for the Borough School.
I'll second. All in favor? Five zero zero. Will, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to say that I think that it's very good that you're looking at it as, what if we don't get to update the building again for the next forty-six years? And is it relevant, like Martha was saying? Do you think that the plan is like completely set going forward?
Well, I think the, if we don't get the approval from the state, the minimum we're going to have to swallow as a community would be to redo the roof. And again, you can do that, we got it with the Taylor, we did that sixty years ago, I guess we replaced just the roof. And that building needs, other, has other needs too, but you can do that. So we could phase it in doing some things like that, but the reality is anytime you do one of these programs, if you can do it all at one shot, you're, you'll never have to kind of come back and revisit something you've already done and potentially damage it again.
And it costs less overall.
Right, you know, because the reality is when I replace the heating system, I may decide, just like we did at the high school here, it's more effective to put a couple rooftops on. Well, if I've already got my roof on, I've got to cut that, open it up, you know, you know, potentially avoid my warranties. I got all kinds of issues I have to go through. So I think you're right, in the short term, if they just say no, timeout, you're not gonna get it for another two years, I have to come back to the town and basically say, we've got a need, we're gonna have to do something here, so.
Unless we find an industrious Eagle Scout wants to take this.
Yeah. And wants to know roofing, wants to do it, apprenticeship in roofing. Roof would be the first thing that's going, actually. It's already, I don't want to say going, going, gone, but let's just say it's on the first going. Why don't you work on that?
I guess we've moved on to others. And I'd love to say congratulations to our jazz. They have been invited once again to be one of the fifteen groups.
They were finalists for essentially Ellington, the school jazz band.
They've been invited to the competition. They've been invited to the competition.
Which is huge. And also, our jazz combo that you were here to approve their travel, they are, were finalists in the Charles Mingus competitions. Kudos to them. And Alexa Dumont, who plays the bass, was named outstanding soloist, so-
Very.
-pretty proud of them, and we do hope to have them back so that we can enjoy their jazz combo brilliance. So, I was thrilled for them.
Yeah, it was very exciting.
Was it?
What an experience for them.
It is. They have such confidence, and they played beautifully, and, uh, it's just such a great environment at that school, and, uh, it was wonderful. It was, I think it's something they're always gonna-
There's some nice clips on the Mingus site, you can get a sense of what they've-
Yeah, it's something they'll always remember, and of course, Alexa, uh, that's just, congratulations to her.
That was Alexa's brother here tonight.
That's right.
The banker.
Oh, for good sake.
Yes, so the family's having a good week.
Good week.
Yes, they are.
A good week. Kind of under our business, we often don't have back-to-back school committee meetings, but because of vacation last week, we have one this week. I want to ask Debbie and I want to ask Bill if you have anything pressing that we should have a school committee meeting, uh, next week, or should we consider maybe canceling?
I'm glad you realized that, 'cause I was just trying to get through February, and I didn't even realize it was already next Monday, so.
It's, it's-
I don't think we, we look at our agendas way ahead, but I don't think we had anything-
We did a lot tonight.
I think we did a lot tonight.
We did do a lot.
Reading special ed. I'd rather see us do one or two more the next meeting than try to come up with an agenda. That's kinda-
I mean, I know that's-
You think, Debbie, that we can wait? I think we're, I think we can wait.
I think the only thing we had on there, other than the, the normal, is the spin review.
Yeah, the reading, special ed, but they can, Amy's co-chairing that. You can wait until something happens.
Then I would need a motion-
I'll make a motion.
Megan's over there nodding and smiling.
Yeah.
What if you, no, you can't.
I'll second it. Uh, that we cancel next week's meeting. All in favor? Five zero zero. And Wendy, would you-
Or they're gonna stay, no, just kidding.
Would you please post that?
Can we pass this down to Wendy, recycle this?
Thank you. Does, do other people have, uh, things under other?
Already addressed the ones I was going to-
I have a couple of things. I wanted to ask Willie how the blood drive went, 'cause the last time we were here, you mentioned that.
It went well, we collected thirty-three units.
That's great. Thank you for organizing.
I did put up to staff, by the way, like I promised you.
Thank you. There were a few staff members who showed up, so they got your email.
Good.
I think the blood drive was the same night as parent technology night, which I wanted to thank you both for all your efforts and all the instructors who were there. It was really a great night, and then everyone I talked to was very impressed with, um, the technology department as a whole. I, I was, of course, very impressed, so.
I, I was, um, impressed that in the session that I did, a woman showed up from, she's an instructional technology specialist in Redding, I believe she said. And she showed up because she saw it on Twitter. So, there's the flip classroom Twitter-
Really?
And it picks up from other Twitter feeds, and I'm surprised I didn't see it, but, um, she saw it on Twitter, and just on, on Twitter feed, that the flip classroom in particular, that I had done with two science teachers who was on it, and she came down, and then she saw the, the agenda for the whole technology night that Amy had posted and decided she'd come down and see what we're doing.
She actually contacted us and asked permission first if she could come, and I said, "Absolutely."
That's fabulous. Very nice.
That is, that was really nice of her. She went around to as many sessions as she could just to see what, what kinds of things are we doing for technology integration, and that's her job. She would be like the Kerry Green, you know, in, that we have here.
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah, so it's, you never know where your information's going.
I read into somebody who, um, I guess during the summer, came to one of the workshops from another school system to our school system, um, as part of the music program and was very, very impressed.
We do that annually. That was the, um, November day.